Good evening. Welcome to the Elk Grove Unified School District Board of Education meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order, announce that we did meet in closed session, and we took action on six items. We approved Nicole Kent as Vice Principal at Kirchgater. Voting in favor was Madison Amavisca Cox, Singh Allen Fortina and Lee, and opposed was Perez. We appointed Christopher Clark as Vice Principal at Valley High School with a unanimous vote of all members present. We approved a settlement agreement on case number BC 410135 and authorized the superintendent to accept the settlement. We approved a settlement on case ADJ 7554577, and we -- all of those were unanimous, and we moved unanimously to terminate a classified employee. I would like to announce that tonight's meeting is being recorded on video and audio and will be available on the district's YouTube channel. Also, there are blue cards available outside the boardroom if you would like to address the board, and please complete one and hand it to a staff member at the table at my right. And be sure to complete on there if you want to speak on the agenda or for a matter that is not on our agenda. If it's on the agenda, that's when we'll allow you to speak. We start our meetings by honoring dedicated individuals in our district that contribute to our students and public education, and they lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight, I would like to ask Ms. Amavisca to introduce our school, who will be recognized tonight.
Good evening. The person that was supposed to be leading us in the pledge tonight was Carmen Wadley. She had an emergency in her family, so our principal Kathy Whiteside from Daler High School will be here accepting or filling in for her. And so, in the meantime, I'm going to tell you something about Ms. Wadley and her absence. Tonight, we are pleased to recognize Carmen Wadley for her outstanding support of William Daler High School. Ms. Wadley relocated to Sacramento from Southern California in 2008 to continue her career as a teacher. After 20 years as a teacher, seven years at the comprehensive high school, and 13 years at the continuation school, she retired. Ms. Wadley enrolled in computer classes to continue her education. Upon completion of her computer classes, she was offered an opportunity to become part of the foster-grandparent program. Ms. Wadley chose to use her experience as a foster-grandparent at William Daler High School. For the past four years, Ms. Wadley has been actively involved as a volunteer. She recognizes the challenges that students face and step in to help redirect her academic path. She helped to provide students with skills they need for life after high school. Ms. Wadley serves as a true role model. Through her support and positive enforcement of the schools' and state's academic standards, she has helped students to focus, improve their attendance, and their achievement. Ms. Wadley has been instrumental in tutoring students using strategies and alternative approaches specifically designed for them. Using this flexibility, students that had been unable to pass the KC numerous times have successfully passed. She also assisted many students in meeting the graduation speech requirement. Ms. Wadley played a significant role in our academic bowl for three years, at which our students have placed first twice and second once. She has attended all of our senior activities from sunrise events to proms and graduation. Carmen Wadley has been a tremendous benefit to all students. In summary, she is extremely positive, cheerful person, and we appreciate her commitment, support -- committed support, I'm sorry, committed support to William Daler High School and the Elk Grove Unified School District. And so, now, Mrs. Whiteside will lead us in the pledge, and then don't go away because
Next on our agenda, we have our high school student representatives to report to us from
I have something for you to give to.
what's going on at the high schools in our district.
Please stand.
And tonight, we're going to hear from Elk Grove and Franklin, and I'd like to call
Begin pledge.
up Elk Grove High School first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, interim superintendent Sarudy
which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
and Ms. Heine. My name is McKenna Engelbrecht, and I am your senior school board representative.
And I'm Alyssa Rodriguez, and I am your junior school board representative.
Once again, this school year started long before August 14th. In July, seniors came together for the traditional painting of the senior steps and mural. The senior theme this year is peace, love, and seniors. It was a great bonding time, and it all looked so groovy. We also were able to welcome the incoming freshmen during our Link Days. With 124 upperclassmen leading the way, 486 freshmen were able to become more acquainted with our school. We had a lot of fun with our Disney Pixar theme up. The day ended with the celebratory Link Dance. The students went home feeling a little more connected and relaxed about moving up.
The back-to-school rally was one to remember. We filled the cartway up with herd pride, and that old roof was raised to the limit. That's when we knew this was going to be an extraordinary year. That night, the freshman class hosted the Welcome Back dance. It was a salute to the red, white, and blue, and the quad trees never looked so patriotic. The following week, we held our back-to-school night. We enjoyed hosting so many of our parents. Next week, we will invite parents onto campus again for Bring Your Parent to School Day, where they will have workshop options and be able to actually sit in on class with their students.
Senior barbecue this year was a huge hit. After an inspirational talk, seniors enjoyed inflatables, music, lip sync performances, and a tri-tip lunch provided by our own ag program. We went home feeling unified and excited about our last year together.
In those first weeks, we held an awesome club rush day. Having 24 clubs to choose from, every student had a chance to try something new and get involved in something they loved. Elk Grove September Blood Drive was an extreme success. We had over 100 students register, and we donated a total of 72 pints of lifesaving blood. We are very proud that our students consistently step up, make a difference, and help save lives.
Our homecoming theme this year was a salute to Dr. Suits. Each class interpreted this a little differently. All the floats looked great, but only one could take home the prize. The seniors won with the sophomores in a close second. On behalf of Elk Grove High School, we'd like to thank both the board and the community members for the support we receive each year to bring the homecoming parade to the streets of Elk Grove.
The Powderpuff game was once again something to remember. The girls were indeed tough enough for Powderpuff, while skirts never looked so good on the boys, who cheered their hearts out for our competitive ladies. Although the sophomore seniors won, everyone was able to come together to enjoy the bonfire held immediately after. We would like to thank the JV men's football program for all their support and our pressbox volunteers, Mr. Newton and the Zender family.
Our FFA program continues to make contributions to our community. September 25th and 26th, they welcomed over 1,000 third graders from throughout the district to come learn about how food is produced. The last week of October, 21 Elk Grove FFA members will be representing California and Elk Grove in national competition at the National FFA Convention in Louisville, Kentucky. Technology and Digital Arts Academy has taken on two new projects. They have instituted a Girls' Day where TDA alumni came to recruit some of the girls into the Computer Engineering Program at Cal Poly San Luis Obispo. TDA students will also be working directly with 4th grade teachers in our district to create posters promoting 4th grade literature. They look forward to serving the community through these projects.
Currently, Unity Herd is helping us organize Hispanic Heritage Month with the special displays and lunchtime activities. Last Friday, we enjoyed an Aztec dance troupe perform an invigorating and colorful dance. November 5th, from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m., we will be holding our academic award nights. We would like to invite all the members of the board to attend while we recognize our hard-working students.
Elk Grove High's sports have started off great this year. Our women's golf team has five freshmen on their starting six. The cross-country team has an expanded roster. Our women's tennis team has welcomed a new coach, and JV women's volleyball is undefeated. Thursday nights are alive again with freshman football, and we look forward to that program rebuilding. The varsity football team has been invited by Jesuit High to play at Levi Stadium this Friday, October 10th. We can't wait to go and support our team while getting a chance to see the new stadium.
The Elk Grove High School band has been going above and beyond. They did a spectacular job at this year's homecoming parade, performing better than ever, leaving us wanting more. They are currently practicing for their upcoming competition show routine. Six musicians will represent Elk Grove High School in the Capital Section Honor Band and three in the All Northern California Band.
Thank you. That concludes our report. Alyssa and I look forward to reporting back to you on December 9th. In the meantime, we welcome you to our mini-campus events.
Thank you. Excellent report, a lot of exciting things going on at Elk Grove. Next, I'd like to welcome Franklin High School representatives.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, interim superintendent Sarudy and Ms. Heine, and welcome to EGUSD Superintendent Hoffman. My name is Jade Cho.
And my name is Natalie Stecklein.
The students, teachers, and staff at Franklin High School kicked off the 2014-2015 school year well. It's been a busy start, filled with activities, athletics, and academics, and our school continues to bustle every single day.
Fall definitely has the most sports of any time in the school year. Between all of Franklin's teams, every day of the week holds quite a few games or matches for students to attend. Franklin's football team continues to do well, as current players hold up the reputation of Franklin alumni. So far, our brand-new freshman team is 4-1, and the JV and varsity teams are 3-2. Men's soccer continues to flourish with a 7-3-1 record, while women's volleyball achieves the same prestige with an 11-8 record.
Women's golf is doing well in their tough league, with their top two players placing high in DVC matches, and the team placing as well, too. Women's tennis is 2-1 right now, recently with a hard-earned victory against the Davis team. Cross-country has had runners placing in most DVC matches, and we look forward to hopefully seeing them in postseason running. Men's and women's water polo are still practicing hard and looking for their first win. As usual, Franklin's fall sports are flourishing, and we look forward to watching all of our sports teams in their season to postseason play and beyond. A big shout-out to all of our fall athletes on an extraordinary season so far, and good luck in future games and matches.
Wildcats hit the ground running just like every other year, with many activities taking place before the start of school on August 14th. 180 Link Crew leaders prepared for their annual freshman orientation, with two training days in early August under the new leadership of Ms. Jilson. As usual, orientation was a success, making Franklin's newest Wildcats feel comfortable and welcome in the crazy world of Franklin.
The class of 2015 kicked off their senior year with a beautiful sunrise and delicious breakfast together. The following week, Link Crew held its annual Link Crew tailgate for freshmen before the first football game. The freshmen played games, ate from popular food trucks, and bonded with their class, attending a fun and spirited football game afterwards. It was a huge success, as both students and staff did not have one negative thing to say about the exciting event. Franklin's clubs held their annual Fall Club Rush, as students signed up for numerous clubs to get more involved in great causes, like breast cancer awareness and recycling. FTC put on its annual dinner show, where performers sang songs from popular Broadway musicals, while the audience enjoyed a delicious meal cooked by the Consumables Oaks Culinary Academy. Franklin's four different performing arts departments banded together to put on an amazing show at Consumables Oaks Theater. FHS's vocal ensemble and Apprentice, Fusion Dance Team and their apprentice, and Advanced Honors Children's Theater put on a great show. Franklin's band will also be hosting the Franklin Band Invitational, as well as participating in the parade performance. The competition will include 22 other middle school and high schools from around the area, all hoping to take home that grand prize.
Of course, the highlight of Term 1 is always Franklin's Fall Homecoming. With this year's theme being Disney classics, but no princesses allowed, the freshmen went with The Jungle Book, the sophomores took Pinocchio, the juniors put on Alice in Wonderland, and the seniors went with Peter Pan for their final high school homecoming. The kickoff to Homecoming Week, the rally, featured performances by Cheer, Fusion, and Drumline, as well as themed skits from every class. The next week was Spirit Week, Monday being Urkel Day, where we were surprised to find out how many of our students owned suspenders, and Tuesday being Dynamic Duo Day, where students dressed up as Tweedledee and Tweedledum, Thing 1 and Thing 2, and much more. Wednesday was Franklin's favorite, Wacky Wednesday, where students broke out their tutus, plaid, floral, and much more. Thursday coincided with the overarching theme as Disney Day, and the week concluded with Franklin Friday, where students sported their purple, black, and white spirit wear in preparation for the game. At the parade, all four classes built extraordinary homecoming flips, but the class of 2015 took home the prize. Franklin won their football -- homecoming football game 56-3 over Sheldon, which took 1,300 of our students into the Saturday dance, where students had a ton of fun until they had to study for their finals on Sunday.
Speaking of finals, Franklin also started the academic year busy and strong. Students powered through tough Term 1 classes to finish off the first quarter of the year on Thursday and Friday with finals. Good luck to all students with their big exams. There is not an academic time busier for the class of 2015 than the first part of their senior year. Yes, it is that time of the year again, college application season. Students are busy with the Common App, SATs, and ACTs, in addition to their already challenging courses. However, Wildcats continue to power through and will finish off their applications to prestigious colleges, such as UCLA, Brown, Stanford, and many more in the coming months, and will hopefully enjoy their last year of high school.
The Franklin Career Center has been hosting college presentations for seniors to attend. So far, John Hopkins University and the University of California Santa Cruz have presented, with many more to come in the coming months. Franklin will continue to strive for academic excellence throughout the 2014-2014 school year, continuing its fabulous reputation. President Cox, members of the board, interim superintendent Sarudy and Ms. Heine, we thank you for your time and consideration this evening. We invite you to attend the many Franklin events in the upcoming months. We are excited to be reporting to you this year and look forward to seeing you next time. Thank you.
Thank you. Another excellent report, and you can tell our high schools are very, very busy and very successful. I did want to mention something. Jade Cho was our board representative to a very special committee this year. She represented our 62,000 students on a committee that was part of our superintendent's search, and she gave up many hours to do that, and I want to tell you how much I appreciate that, because I know how busy you are, especially with all the applications and all those things on top of your regular work. So I'd like to give her a round of applause. And with that, I'd also like to thank the principals for their support. From Elk Grove High, we have Ms. Kathy Guy. And I take it we have a few of the thundering herd in the audience, too. And also, I'd like to thank Ms. Chantel Albianni, principal of Franklin High. Thank you. And board representatives, you may now leave to do your homework. Or Franklin High, you do have some recognition tonight, too, for your school on number six or nine, excuse me. Where are my glasses? Okay, thank you very much, students. We appreciate your contributions to the school. And next on the agenda is the Energy Awareness Month Resolution and Energy Conservation, and Mr. Rob Pierce will give this presentation.
Thank you, President Cox, members of the board, Mr. Sarudy and Ms. Heine. This, as you all know, is an annual item that my staff and I take great pride in and hold near and dear to our heart. Each year, we present to the board our results of our prior year's energy conservation efforts and how many dollars that saved us at the end of the year, where those dollars went. And we also, in the last two years, have decided to kind of dovetail this with student representatives. So I'm very happy tonight that we have student representatives who are very impressive from Franklin High School. They were the benefit of a program through the summer, where they learned how to do energy audits, and they'll be talking to you a little bit about their energy audits tonight. But first, we're going to talk to you about our 2013-14 Energy Conservation Program and the results of it. This is a program that dates back to a conversation that Dr. Lad and I then had with our SMUD representatives. In fact, it's Mr. Kelvin Marshall, who's here tonight representing SMUD. And I always share this story where Mr. Marshall candidly shared with us that you guys spend way too much on electricity, much more so than top-performing districts. And as the board knows, we're a very competitive entity, and we always want to hear that we're number one, not that we're lagging. So we took that personally, and we rolled out an energy conservation program in partnership with all of our bargaining units, all of our stakeholders, and all of our employees essentially, as well as our students, who you'll hear from a little later this evening. So we thank them for that candid conversation that they had with us. And we made it a point that our program would be cost-free. It's simply a behavioral program. So at the time, we weren't in the situation to spend a lot of money on capital. We weren't going out replacing HVAC units or lighting. The kids, we'll talk to you a little bit about that later. We're happy that Prop 39 is now in place and will give us that opportunity. But my mantra in this program that we rolled out in the 2009-2010 school year was just for everyone to pretend they pay the bills. In other words, treat your workstation, whether it be here at the district office, or a classroom, or at transportation, treat your office like you would your home, and if you're not using it, turn it off. And we came up with some guidelines that are quite thick, and they're on our website, but they put in place some building operation models that we really hadn't had in place for a long time. So we were very careful about it. We didn't want to be indictful of anyone. It just wasn't part of our culture, and we wanted to slowly make it part of our culture as we rolled that out in the 2009-2010 school year. So to that end, I really have to thank everyone. It's been an honor to kind of be the person ushering this program. Myself and Ms. Eileen Cruz, who you'll meet a little later, my admin assistant. It was really just the two of us going out and begging of people to get on board and help us with this program. The budget cuts made it a little easier for people to swallow. I think they understood the magnitude and the urgency of the situation, but that really allowed people to step up and see immediate results. So I thank everyone, including the board. Without that level of support, programs like this falter, and there has to be someone at the top that's supporting the program. And you'll see in the coming slides that success has been overwhelming. I think SMUD would echo that if they were standing at the podium here tonight, not myself. A number of districts have approached us and want to know the secret and the magic in this, and it's really just getting complete buy-in from the top all the way down to the lower levels. So in the 13-14 school year, we had a goal of $1.3 million in dollar savings. We had a goal of a kilowatt-hour consumption reduction of nearly 12 million kilowatt-hours. And then, we've had a program within our own model that's been very successful, and you'll see some happy site administrators here shortly, where we have agreed to share the savings back with the sites. Again, it was a time of cuts. Our site discretionary budgets were being cut, and this was a tool to allow us to replenish those cuts. So we have taken 10% of the overall savings and shared that amongst the sites that have been successful within their own programs, which they benefit from clearly. So these are numbers that I find to be very impressive. I don't know about the others in the world, but they're quite significant. So we use the 2008-2009 school year as our baseline year. In other words, that was a year we didn't have a program in place. There was no guidelines. We weren't asking people to do anything different than they've always done, and we were consuming over 62 million kilowatt-hours of electricity. Through the program and its improvement throughout the years, you can see there that in the 2013-2014 school year, that consumption has reduced from 62 million down to just below 48 million kilowatt-hours of consumption. That's a significant, significant reduction, especially given the fact that we've grown over that time, we've added facilities over that time. So you would expect that number to increase, not decrease. So for the life of the five-year program, we've reduced just over 66 million kilowatt-hours of electricity. So we've always tried to equate that to things that people understand in their day-to-day lives. So through this program, it is equivalent to reducing approximately 10,000 vehicles from the roadway for an entire year, the CO2 emissions from consuming over 5 million gallons of gasoline, annual CO2 emissions from the electricity consumed by over 6,300 homes, and the carbon sequestered annually from nearly 38,000 acres of trees. So just with regard to what we've done for the environment, it's quite significant. But people really, at the end of the day, only want to talk dollars. So the kilowatt-hours are important. Those are huge reductions, but what's it mean in terms of dollars and savings? So for the five-year program, we have saved nearly $9 million just in electricity bills alone. Huge, huge savings, obviously. And one thing that I tried to do to put into perspective today, if we were still consuming at those 2008-2009 levels with today's electricity rate, although SMUD's rates are still very low, they have climbed over time and will probably do so in the future. But anyway, if we were still consuming at those same levels, our electricity bill last year would have been $8.3 million, as opposed to $6.3 million. And again, it's every person doing just a little bit. We're a huge organization, so if everybody takes the simple feat of turning their computer screens off every night, that saves us $80,000 a year. If we were one school, school district, it wouldn't be as significant, but in our order of magnitude, every little bit helps if we're all doing it, and you can clearly see from that slide, we are all doing it. So what we do on nights like this each year, we also acknowledge the school sites that are the top performers in their respective grade levels, and we ask them to come tonight, and they get their ceremonial check, and we acknowledge them. What I want to say about some of the sites you'll see tonight and share with the board and the group at large, there's no magic to any of this. It's simply people doing their part, and I can promise you that every one of the schools that come up tonight, I know exactly what they're doing. They have a program in place. They usually have a champion around the cause. They have a teacher, or a custodian, or both, or an office member who really pushed the program and remind people and constantly do it. So the sites who aren't achieving at these levels, there aren't mysteries involved. It's just simply people owning it and moving it forward. And it's, again, evident, you'll see tonight, there are sites who tend to always be here in October during Energy Awareness Month, but there are some sites tonight who have really leapfrogged the competition and have jumped to either first or at least placing. And again, we can point to exactly what they're doing and how they've gotten there. So without a further ado, I'm going to bring those sites forward and then take any questions that the board would like. I would ask that we hold applause until we get them all up here, or else you won't hear their names in the great achievement. I would ask for a board member to help, and then I'm going to invite Ms. Eileen Cruz, my admin assistant, who champions this alongside me each and every day, to assist. So we're going to have the sites come So what we do on nights like this each year, we also acknowledge the school sites that are the top performers in their respective grade levels, and we ask them to come tonight, and they get their ceremonial check, and we acknowledge them. What I want to say about some of the sites you'll see tonight and share with the Board and the group at large, there's no magic to any of this. It's simply people doing their part, and I can promise you that every one of the schools that come up tonight, I know exactly what they're doing. They have a program in place. They usually have a champion around the cause. They have a teacher, or a custodian, or both, or an office member who really pushed the program and remind people and constantly do it. So the sites who aren't achieving at these levels, there aren't mysteries involved. It's just simply people owning it and moving it forward. And it's, again, evident, you'll see tonight, there are sites who tend to always be here in October during Energy Awareness Month, but there are some sites tonight who have really leapfrogged the competition and have jumped to either first or at least placing. And again, we can point to exactly what they're doing and how they've gotten there. So without a further ado, I'm going to bring those sites forward and then take any questions that the Board would like. I would ask that we hold applause until we get them all up here, or else you won't hear their names in the great achievement. I would ask for a Board member to help, and then I'm going to invite Ms. Eileen Cruz, my admin assistant, who champions this alongside me each and every day, to assist. So we're going to have the sites come here, they're going to get their check, and then they're going to come up, come up here. Okay, so first, the number-one elementary school this year, the top-performing school, again, is Herman Leinbach, and they are represented tonight by Mr. Abolero Cordova. He's the principal, of course. No applause. That's fine. So this is a site that, again, they really stepped up last year. They came in first place last year out of nowhere. They weren't in the top 10, and they stepped into first place. And then this year, they're back, and they're at 255% of their goal. The second site is John Reeth Elementary School, and they are represented by Louise Roche Fold Gould, the principal, and Debbie Woodward, the secretary. This is their first time in the top tier of elementary schools. So again, a new site on the scene that's doing new things. And this is a secretary who I can tell you, she says, "Well, I'm the one who goes around each night and turns everything off." So like I said, there's always a champion behind the scenes. Florence Markoffer is the next elementary school at 218%. This is three years running for them in the top three. They, excuse me, fourth year in the top three, and they're represented tonight by Mr. Gordon Blackwood, the principal, who was the champion at John Reeth, and now again, Markoffer is at the top of the list. And then, of course, our good friend, Mr. Dave Nevis, the principal of Elk Grove Elementary School. They have been in the top five every year of the program, and they started in fifth, jumped to first, and then the competition went forward from there, and third and now fourth place this year at 216%. And then another school that's been a champion of this cause from day one, they've had teachers on the advisory committee who take it very personally, is Folks Ranch Elementary, and they are represented tonight by their vice principal, Erin Colburn. So those are the five elementary schools. I'm going to ask Ms. Johnson to come up and take a quick photo. I will share with the Board. We always try to pick a reasonable cutoff, and the next tier of elementary schools went from 190% to 160% of their goal, still a great achievement, and there were seven of those schools. So we have to make the cutoff somewhere, but all of our schools do a great job. Now we can applaud. This is the long part? Oh, sure.
I'm going to go ahead and fill the silence just a little bit here. But I think when Rob came to work for us, I think this was his first major assignment. And I think in the beginning, he wasn't making a lot of friends, but I think over the time when everybody saw the savings and got their own checks back, got some of it back, then I think he made friends again. But this was his baby from the very beginning, so Rob has, was major, major force behind this.
Thank you for that. Okay, jumping right to middle schools. Now, I have to pause here because this is a school, Samuel Jackman, that I won't go so far as to say they were struggling, but they had a new custodian, who you'll meet here in a minute, who wanted to be one of the top-performing middle schools. He joined the advisory committee. He asked for assistance and wanted to know how they could get there, and they just leaps and bounds past everyone up. They were never in the top two for middle schools, and now they're number one. So I'm extremely proud of this entire group that I'm going to announce because I know they all took it personal, and they met their goal, and I think did better than they thought they would, honestly. So represented tonight, Samuel Jackman, the number-one middle school, is Michael Anderson, the principal, Jared Anderson, the lead custodian, who's been a pioneer for this, Danielle Zamfier, who's the night custodian, Mark Smith, a night custodian, and Aaron Baer, also a custodian. So great job to those gentlemen, and kudos.
Excuse me, can you tell us how big the check is, reimbursement?
So this check is nearly $2,000, which the site will receive in their discretionary funds. So I can't thank them enough, and they're a model for me now of sites that really want to step up and perform, and they proved that this year, which I will say probably to the chagrin of Toby Johnson because they've owned number one. They were a school that volunteered the first year to go full-fledged into the program, and they have been number one just about every year. But Jackman did a wonderful job this year. So you can see, they were at 134%, Toby's at 132%, and they're represented tonight by Brian Kincaid, the vice principal. So great job again to Toby Johnson. And we're going to keep going here. No surprise to anyone, Laguna Creek High School has been number one for the past three years, and they're number one again after falling to number two last year. So we're excited about that, 176%. They work extremely hard of it. Doug Craig, the principal, is here tonight, and he's gracious about it because he always tries to come up with excuses why they got to one. But, and their excuse is because he's being humble about it, but it's because they champion it, and Gary Greenbaum, who's one of their teachers, really focuses on it. He couldn't be with us tonight because of a surgery, unfortunately, but we thank the entire school. And then another school similar to Jackman is Florin High School. So they were never in the top tier of high schools, and they came out of nowhere this last year at 147%. So we're very, very excited about Florin High, and they're represented by Elias Mendoza, the vice principal. For Florin, it's probably, yeah, they're excited. They've always been, they've always been at that third spot, and it was either Valley or Laguna Creek or Franklin edging them out, but this year, they stepped up. So in a dead heat, I actually put the decimal point there because it's literally that close between Lost Forest and the next school that all present, but Lost Floris is two years in a row as number one. This year was really too close to call, but they're represented by Ralph Robles, the principal at Lost Floris. We thank them. And then, of course, William DeLar High School. They do a tremendous job, and normally, we would only acknowledge one of our alternative ed high schools, but because the fight was tied, we had to acknowledge them, and they're represented by the principal, Catherine Whiteside, tonight for the second time at the podium diocese. And after the picture, I would be happy to answer any questions the Board might have, but ask you to adopt the resolution in support of October as Energy Awareness Month.
I'll move the resolution, that we adopt Resolution Number 18, 2014-15, and as October and Energy Awareness Month.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and segmented to adopt a resolution to designate October as Energy Awareness Month. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried enthusiastically.
Thank you, all of the schools and the support staff and everybody that's contributed to this. I think it's very clear that it's a huge savings. It's also the right thing to do. And again, like Ms. Amaviska said, we'd like to thank our chief champion, Mr. Pierce, for his enthusiasm and creativity and coming up with a way to make us realize that we can do something of this magnitude in our district. So thank you, and I know you're going to recognize some students.
Yep.
And Mr. Lee, if there's going to be a time to recognize them?
The students are going to make a presentation to the Board.
Okay.
And then...
Then he'll come down and congratulate them.
So I seem anxious and nervous tonight just because there's an impressive group of kids that I knew were going to follow me, and I've been working really closely with them. They're spot-on. And Ms. Cox, you mentioned something, for our students, the younger generation, this all comes very, very natural, but for many of us, it doesn't. And so, you know, their work is solid, and they believe in it, and they trust it, and they know it to be true, and so I think you'll see that with them. But I thank them for their efforts this summer, their auditing and what they've learned and what they've presented that I've gotten a first blush at, which you'll receive shortly. And I also wanted to thank SMUD. Again, Kelvin Marshall, our key accounts representative, is here tonight, and then also Jacob Katedz, who you might remember from last year in a similar program, is here tonight, representing SMUD. But with that, I'm going to let the students introduce themselves, and I'm going to let them introduce the program and share with you a little bit about their summer and their year. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Alan Curtis, who's their teacher at Franklin High School, who's also here tonight, and I know the students will acknowledge him as well.
Good evening, President, Superintendent, Ms. Hein, and the other members of the Board. My name is Tierra Dela Cruz.
I'm Brianna Chu.
I'm Benjamin Chong.
I'm Emily Coleman.
I'm Tyler Drafin.
I'm Danielle Finkus.
I'm Adam Ayada.
And I'm Melissa Tham. And we are the Franklin High School Audit Team. At the end of our presentation, we actually have a pop quiz for you guys. Where you can...
Uh-oh.
Correct answers are going to be given prizes.
Over the summer, we were given the opportunity by SMUD to participate in a 40-hour training program on energy conservation and energy efficiency. SEI employees trained us and taught us the basic skills of energy auditing so that we could analyze Franklin independently. We performed an energy audit on Samuel Jackman Middle School. They provided us with tools such as the watt meter, ammeter, temperature pen, and a light meter. An energy audit is an analysis of energy flow and usage in a building. The purpose of auditing Franklin was to find ways to help the school become more energy-efficient while also saving the school money and promoting a greener earth. This graph shows the amount of CO2 emitted by Franklin alone. If we were to implement these changes later on, we would save about a month's worth of CO2 emissions, which is about 93,000 pounds of CO2. This number may not seem significant, but it really does make a difference in the atmosphere. The majority of CO2 produced is due to the usage of HVAC systems.
Our audit, in our audit, we focus on three main areas of energy and electricity use, which were lighting, appliances, and mechanical systems. And here, we have graphs of our electricity usage and bill amount over the past two years, and our energy usage peaks at 330,000 kilowatt-hours a month, which costs us $45,000 a month. And these peaks usually occur during the warm months, when the air conditioning systems are frequently used.
Okay, so first, we have the lighting requirements for schools, and a foot candle is basically a measurement of light. So these are the amount of foot candles that each room should be illuminated with. For restrooms, it's 10 to 20-foot candles, classrooms, 30 to 50, and a kitchen, it would be 50 to 75-foot candles. Lighting is actually one of the most costly and most energy-consuming systems at our school, so it would be extremely cost-efficient of us to find ways to improve our lighting. Okay, so we observed at Franklin that actually many of the rooms were overlit. So we found that you can remove up to four lamps in each of the rooms and still meet the minimum lighting requirements. This would save us money because we would take out some of the bulbs and therefore use less energy in each room. Also, another alternative would be to use natural light. So instead of turning on the lights in a classroom, if it's a really sunny day, we could just open up the blinds and use the light that's already coming in at no cost to us. Another observation that we had was that many of the lights were left on before or after school in rooms that weren't even occupied. So a recommendation we would have to fix this would be to install occupancy sensors and timers because they would automatically turn off when people leave the room and therefore fix the problem. At our school, we actually found that many of the rooms had already changed from T12 bulbs to T8 bulbs, which is a smaller, more efficient bulb, and it's actually a huge improvement and a really big upgrade. So that's a really big plus that our school already has. The only thing we would actually change is that on the exterior lights of our school, we have HID bulbs, which are high-intensity discharge bulbs, and those could be upgraded to CFLs, which save 75% more energy, or even better would be LEDs because those save 80% more energy. We also found that in the gym and the multipurpose room, they also contain HID lights, but we probably couldn't upgrade those because there's a lack of accessibility to how high the lights are in the room. And, okay, so although it will cost us some money to buy these new light bulbs, that's obviously a concern, it is important to note that within nine and a half months, all of this money will already be paid back. And it will save $892 in the first year, and then $2,879 every year after that. So these changes, as well as delamping, are highly recommended by us to help us save energy and money. Okay, so in this, we have two pictures on the outside, are Alyssa and Danielle, and they're holding up LED lights, and they're right next to an exterior light, which is HID. And then I'm in the center, holding up a T8 that's going into our normal classroom lights.
At Franklin High School, there is 417 computers and 387 other appliances. Many appliances created phantom load being left plugged in. Phantom load is the energy drawn from the appliances that are turned off but still left plugged in, which wastes energy. Also at Franklin, a lot of the appliances were non-Energy Star and outdated. Approximately 590,000 watts of power equate to 29,000 kilowatts per hour of energy per Some recommendations that we considered would remove phantom load was using a power strip. For example, if you look up on the screen, there is an updated power strip. Also, to encourage the staff to use less appliances in classrooms or buy more Energy Star appliances. We could save about $5,300 a year, 44,400 kilowatts per hour, and 29,300 pounds of CO2 if we replace appliances with Energy Star-efficient appliances. If we eliminate the phantom load, we will save about $3,500 a year, 29,200 kilowatts per hour, and 9,300 pounds of CO2.
Next, we have our mechanical systems, which include HVACs, water heaters, and motors. And in any building, the mechanical systems will be the largest energy-consuming component and therefore a prime target for savings. At Franklin High School, we actually found 11 old and inefficient water heaters, which if replaced, we would be able to save about $6,401 and $6,401 terms of gas, which equate to about 75,000 pounds of CO2. However, we would like to note that our current water heaters are well-maintained and properly labeled.
Heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, or HVAC, systems regulate temperature in commercial buildings such as high schools. These HVAC systems are controlled by thermostats. At Franklin High School, we found a total of 215 HVAC systems that utilize less-efficient technology. We would recommend that we replace these HVACs with more energy-efficient models. In doing so, we can save about $20,000 every year, 160,000 kilowatt-hours, and 108,000 pounds of CO2. While these current models that we have may be inefficient, we have noticed that they were really well-maintained, which is a positive.
As you all know, many of our classrooms have thermostats in them with limited temperature control in order to reduce energy consumption. Our thermostats are all pre-programmed to meet the Elk Grove Unified School District's energy conservation guidelines. When we conducted our audit, we used items such as this laser thermometer to determine the actual temperature in our classrooms as opposed to what the thermostats read the temperature of our classrooms. We found that they were working as intended, but sometimes they weren't as accurate as we found them to be. So we would recommend calibrating these again and then maintaining them as such.
Now, one thing that is easily preventable are air drafts. And air drafts are when air-conditioned or heated air escape from rooms through cracks and leaks. We found that 59% of doors... We found that 59% of doors and 28% of windows at Franklin High School actually have these drafts. Now, if we replace or at least maintain our weather strippings on these doors and windows, we can easily save money and the additional air-conditioned and heated air that is escaping our rooms. We can even install double or triple-pane windows to save this energy and air. Little things can make a big difference.
Promoting energy conservation, which is energy-saving behavior, is something that the district already does well and should continue to do. However, to promote energy conservation at Franklin High School, we as students can raise awareness by announcing reminders on our news broadcasts and hanging posters around school. In addition, we have also already formed a club with the intentions of promoting energy conservation, and we hope to challenge the administration at our school to bring us back to number one in the energy rankings. Now, although energy conservation saves the district a substantial amount of money, we encourage the Elk Grove Board to embrace energy efficiency, which is upgrading to mechanical and lighting systems that use less energy for a given output, such as replacing HID bulbs with LEDs, replacing less-efficient HVAC systems with newer models, and exchanging older appliances with Energy Star-certified appliances.
Historically, we as a community have always talked about measures to conserve energy and promote energy efficiency. However, we have not always been able to carry out every single green project that we had in mind. But now, with the passage of Proposition 39, we do have those funds. Proposition 39 actually provides a significant amount of funds to school districts to fund and carry out these green projects.
If the changes recommended in this report are implemented, we can save about $5,000 in lighting, $9,000 in appliances, and about $20,000 in mechanical systems. These new savings can help fund programs like sports and the arts and help us buy new supplies like books and paper. In addition, we will also have less of an impact on the environment as we would prevent 184,000 pounds of CO2 from being released into the air.
All right, now we will have our pop quiz. I hope you guys are ready for this. Okay, remember, as a prize for the correct answer, we are awarding LED light bulbs. Okay, so for our first question, which of these systems are the top energy consumers in EGUSD? A, HVAC, B, appliances, or C, lighting?
C, lighting.
Uh, not quite.
Who answered first?
What type of lighting is the most energy-efficient? A, LEDs, B, fluorescent lighting, C, incandescent lighting, D, high-intensity discharge lighting? LEDs is correct.
And now our final quiz question. What is the best reason to augment conservation and efficiency in the Elk Grove Unified School District? A, efficiency is going to cost money but will save in the long run. B, conservation changes behavior. C, saving money and... That's correct. Congratulations, it's D.
To wrap this presentation up, we want to thank to all that supported us during this audit, including EGUSD Energy Policies, Samuel Jackman Middle School, Maintenance and Operations, Facilities and Planning, Custodial Staff, and Franklin High School Staff. Also, Strategic Energy Innovations and SMUD were helpful in providing us with technical and financial support. Great appreciation to the EGUSD Board for implementing appropriate energy guidelines which take action and make Elk Grove more efficient. Also, thank you Kelvin Marshall, Jacob Cadiz, and our Principal Ms. Albion for supporting us during this audit. Finally, a huge thank you to our wonderful teacher, mentor, and advisor, Mr. Curtis.
Mr. Pierce is at the conclusion, because I would like Mr. Lee to come down and represent the board and congratulate each of you. And also, for a photo op, have Mr. Curtis and the representatives from SMUD.
I wanted to thank the board. This is a requirement of the students with their internship, and I think you guys, they haven't paid you yet, have they? No. So their report that they handed out to you tonight, that each of them have signed, is a requirement of their internship, as is the presentation that they just gave the school board. And you can see, they're spot-on in the wonderful thing, they even know about Proposition 39. And thank goodness it's in place now to do the very things that they're now talking about. So we're excited about that as well. But I'm sure you have questions for them.
Yeah, I just thought Mr. Lee...
I have questions for Mr. Pierce. So now that we have this great report, what are we going to do with it?
So what's happening now is, as the board might recall, we are doing energy audits at all of our school sites through our MOU that you recently approved with SMUD. So what we will start doing through Proposition 39, approximately $3 million a year, we'll be prioritizing those projects. So lowest-hanging fruit first, but you heard from the students what those are tonight, HVAC, lighting, and what was the other one? Yeah, appliances. So appliances are kind of a voluntary thing that's out there. And I know I've spoken with all members of our associations about that. We don't mandate that you cannot have personal appliances. We do ask individual sites to do as they best see fit, but we do ask that they all be unplugged and out of service during long breaks. It's something we didn't want to lose the support of the program over something like that. So we're moving that direction, but certainly Energy Star rated is right there. So Proposition 39 is right around the corner for us, and it'll be doing the very projects they're mentioning.
Yeah, and in addition to that, Rob, I know you've been working on deferred maintenance plan. In addition to the Proposition 39 plan, will you also be addressing these issues in the deferred maintenance plan?
So what we're hoping to do, excellent question, yes, our deferred maintenance plan continues to be maintained, although the state isn't funding it. And we are also not dedicating dollars to it. But I believe if we're smart about our Prop 39 plan, we'll be able to do some of the things that we otherwise would with deferred maintenance. But those things are still being addressed in the plan. The question becomes funding. So that's something that we'll have to continue to talk about with the board.
And I think, you know, many of us believe in the funding, it costs less upfront than it costs after the fact.
I absolutely would concur. Thank you.
Review my notes here. You mentioned you saved $5,000, $9,000, and $20,000. Was $5,000 for the lighting?
Yes.
Was $9,000 for the appliances?
Yes.
And $20,000 for the mechanical?
Yes.
Okay, that's $34,000 of savings, correct? Now, the question I have as a board member, how much would it cost to do all those recommendations that you suggested in your report?
Lighting, you could buy the LED bulbs in bulk. I think they were... What was it? I think it was like $10 for a pack of light. It was multiple bulbs, but it was at a very cheap price.
Okay, what I'm getting at, make this complete, I'd like to find out how much it would cost for the school, the actual lighting costs, your recommendations. And for the appliances, how much your recommendations, how to replace those, and see the difference. Most likely, it's what, less than half $34,000?
So part of the work we're doing now, Mr. Perez, will include kind of a cost-benefit analysis. So it will price out how much the capital equipment costs and what the payback is in terms of savings.
Very good.
And the California Energy Commission has a certain requirement of that return, and so we have to meet that threshold before we can spend dollars on it. But I can almost promise you that HVAC and lighting will meet that threshold just about every time, except for newer schools that have more efficient HVAC units. So we will actually be providing that cost. It's a little more detailed than the students, just because of the estimating that goes into the replacement of those systems.
Okay, what I'm getting at is that maybe it costs one-third of the 34. So if for every dollar you spend on these items, you save three down the road, correct?
It's probably more the other way around. So for every $3 you spend, you'll save a dollar. So it's all life cycle. So it may take you 10 years to pay back a huge mechanical system, but you are going to save money overall in the lifetime of that. What a lot of people don't appreciate is the capital budget is completely aside from the operational budget. So I know you have the same interest that I do. We would love to save as much as we can on the operational side because it goes back to the classroom, as the students mentioned. But if we have a zero bank account on the capital side, we can't do it even if we wanted to. So that's the beauty of Proposition 39. So the mechanical systems are very expensive. In a school like Franklin, you're talking easily $500,000, if not more, to replace. But the life cycle of those systems is so long, overall, you will end up saving money. But you will get that exact information as we wrap up our Prop 39 audits.
Excellent report, thank you very much.
I have two really quick questions. First of all, on these bulbs, they're kind of heavy, but what's the comparison to the regular watts? Say if I was, you know, 60-watt, 100-watt, what would it be? If I'm to go out and buy...
60.
I don't think it says on there, unless it's...
Right there.
Oh, duh. 60-watt. My next question is, did each of you during this project, did you perform audits at your homes?
Yes.
Did you find that you were saving money and were your parents pleased?
Yeah, unplugging like the simple, like chargers or like candle lights, like just slowly just doing that actually started saving little money.
And actually, during the summer program that we went through, they had us go through this like website at SMUD where you could like put in how much energy your house uses through like the amount of appliances you have at home. And then it like spit out a number of how much CO2 you're emitting. So just by chaining things in your own house, you can save a lot of money.
So your parents learned and your family members learned from this project too. One more quick question. Did you get all their numbers so they can come back and work for us?
I was going to joke, I want to hire all of them. So we'll see what the future holds for them. They're obviously on a good path to a bright future, so they're all good kids, hardworking, so.
Thank you. Very impressive, very good work. Don't go anywhere, Mr. Pierce. We want a photo op with our SMUD representatives and our board representative and our principal, Ms. Albion, and our teacher, Mr. Curtis. Would you please come forward and get them organized? And are there parents in the audience? Would you please stand if you're here? We have, I see some back there. You're welcome to come up closer and take a picture. Thank you. Great students. And I think Ms. Albion heard the challenge from her students, that next year you want to be number one in the energy conservation for the district, so it'll be interesting to see. Thank you again, outstanding work. We're very proud of you. And thank you, Mr. Pierce. I think you're coming back in a little bit. Oh. Thank you, that's very thoughtful. Very bright idea. Sorry. Thank you. Next, we do not have any student expulsion recommendations, and our LCAP update will be next Wednesday at a study session workshop board meeting, as well as our community meetings on October 21st. Our budget update, we're doing that under discussion action on the replacement of bus lease. So I have one blue card from people requesting to address the board, and that is Susan Mason. And if you'll come forward and state your name and you have the three minutes, you
President Cox, members of the board, interim superintendent, Sarudy, Ms. Hines. My name is Susan Mason. Tonight, I'd like to read an email that I received from Pacific Justice Institute. While I don't see evidence of any of this going on in Elk Grove Unified, I'd still like to read the email. It's titled "School Students Plan to Celebrate Killer as Role Model." "A pro-parent group is alarmed by upcoming plans for schools across America to celebrate several highly questionable individuals as heroes, including someone recently released from prison for manslaughter. The killer-turned-hero is just the tip of the iceberg, according to attorneys at Pacific Justice Institute, who are calling on parents to pay attention throughout October to what is being taught in schools as part of LGBT History Month." Quote, "It's almost unbelievable who these activists think should be held up as role models. Every year, the celebration gets more disturbing and bizarre, but telling kids that a killer is a hero represents a new low," end quote. That was from Brad Dacus, president of PGI. "The organizers of LGBT History Month annually select 31 icons of LGBT history that they urge schools and students to learn about and celebrate, one for each day in October." The list is posted on their website. "Perhaps the most concerning to parents this year will be the inclusion of CeCe McDonald, who was released from prison earlier this year after serving time in the killing of a man who insulted her. CeCe was charged with second-degree murder and accepted a plea of second-degree manslaughter after fatally stabbing the man with scissors. CeCe is presented in LGBT History Month as a prison reformer who brought attention to the plight of transgender inmates. Works by several of the other individuals included on this year's list would not otherwise be allowed in schools or most homes. For example, a music video of icon John Cameron Mitchell has been deemed too explicit to be shown on MTV Europe." And there's other examples. "Last year, the number of school districts officially celebrating LGBT Month grew to include LA, Fresno, Philadelphia, Charlotte, and two counties in Florida. In most districts around the country, LGBT History Month is promoted with posters and other materials by the Gay-Straight Alliance, student clubs, and by individual teachers without advance notice to parents. PGI is urging parents to talk immediately to all their children's teachers and school administrators to find out whether any promotion of LGBT History Month will be taking place over the next few weeks and to keep an eye out for posters promoting drag queens, radical activists, or prison reformers as historical figures." Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have bargaining units. Any presentations? I said it's under the next, it's under budget. Yes.
Good evening, everybody. President Cox, Superintendent, or Acting Superintendent Sarudy, Ms. Hines, board members. I'm Nancy Clifford with the American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees. I'm here to talk to you tonight about the consequences of delay. You know about this because I know you discuss these things in closed session, but you know that AFSCME has a grievance that is going to arbitration later this month. We filed, or I should say, our member filed this grievance last year. It has taken in excess of 10 months to get this particular case before an arbitrator. And given the way arbitrators work, we won't have a decision before January or February. That creates problems, not just with process, but there are actual economic consequences to this kind of delay. When we were trying to resolve this grievance and negotiate it, oh, and I need to tell you, I'm not here to argue the merits of the case, and I really don't want to discuss the issues. That's not why I'm here. I'm talking about process, delays, and their consequence. So we were talking about this in January and February, and we were told by your finance were told by your finance associate superintendent that the cost to fix the issue that's going to arbitration back then was about $1 million and a half. We are 10 months beyond that now. If AFSCME prevails, the consequence of all these delays magnifies the amount that's going to have to be payable. I'm sure you're all hoping that we lose this arbitration. I don't know whether we're going to lose it or win it, but that's for the arbitrator to decide. We don't understand why it takes so long for a process that's fairly well detailed in our contract to take, by the time it's over, in excess of one year. You know, there's a saying among the people that I run with, that justice delayed is justice denied. And in this case, this particular issue is going to affect a majority of our bargaining unit and eventually everybody. They've been waiting so long for somebody to make a final decision on this, that when we finally do get there, there will be people that forget what the fight was about to begin with. You pay a lot of money to the attorneys who represent you and advise you. There's nobody that benefits from this delay except them. If, as I say, if we prevail in this case, we're looking at more than $2 million to make it right. If we don't prevail, more bad feelings, more anger at the delay, and the only ones who benefit are the attorneys that you employ to advise you and direct you. I'm here tonight to ask you to consider telling your attorneys to stop delaying so much. There's nothing we can do about this particular case now, unless somebody wants to tell us to go out and settle it, which we'd love to do. But that's not going to happen. But we've got four more grievances in the pipeline about different aspects of the salary schedule. Are we going to wait four more years to get a decision, let alone justice? I hope not. I'm asking you to consider this tonight, and I think it's about time that the district stopped employing attorneys who do nothing but delay. Thank you.
Any other bargaining units? Okay, we don't, how many reports? We don't have public carience action item. We have developer fee annual report, our first reading from Mr. Pierce. This is a discussion item tonight. Oops. Excuse me, 9A, you're right. On my list, it has nine after 10, but that's okay. We have discussion action. This could be an action item.
This is developer fee.
Oh, you're the developer fee. Oh, you're not, okay, so I wasn't reading it incorrectly. Okay.
Wrong person. Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Saruti, and Ms. Hines. This evening, the board has asked to review the 2013-14 developer fee expenditures. Government code requires that the annual report of expenditures from developer fees, beginning and ending balances, and the Capital Facilities Fund be made available to the public. For the convenience of the board, we've attached a summary of the district's unaudited financial records. The handouts that were given to the board have all this information. Members of the public are desiring more information regarding the developer fees may contact the Facilities Department. The district remains in full compliance with all legal requirements regarding developer fees. All fees collected related to the accommodation of new student enrollment growth. All fees are spent within five years of receipt. Tonight is a first reading of this document. We'll be back on November 4th to ask the board for approval. And with that, I'll take any comments.
Okay, we are on the developer fee annual report, a first reading. Any questions or comments? Okay, then you completed the item, and now you can do 9A. Replacement bus lease, do you have your materials?
I'm thinking on the next four.
Okay, you're up here for a while.
So I'm ready.
Great. Thank you.
And I'll just kind of qualify this. The bus lease has a couple of components to it. Some time ago, the board asked staff to make recommendations about the possibility of funding a budget priority that had not been funded out of an existing priority, and that's the student fees. As the board knows, these are fees that are mandated for the completion of the educational process, but are not allowed to be, students aren't allowed to be charged, or parents are allowed to be charged for them. This is a similar allocation that we had last year, and the board gave us direction, staff direction, to go back and see if we could find some allocated, previously allocated funds that we might be able to use, redirect to this purpose this year. Additionally, the board indicated an interest that staff look to find a way to fund the field trip program associated with the nutrition education program. And this is the program that transfers, transports kids to the food processing center every year, and I believe fifth grade, to visit the processing center to see how it works. It's tied in with the classroom work that our teachers do on nutrition education. It previously was funded out of a grant, then later picked up by Food Services. A recent audit indicated that, the state indicated that we couldn't use these funds for that. It's a little bit disingenuous when they send us a direction to promote nutrition education programs and then come back and say that these funds can't be used for that. Superintendent Lab sent a very strongly worded letter with Michelle Drake's help to the CDE, so we've appealed their initial denial of our ability to use that. But unfortunately, you know, we worked within the guidelines, trying to get them to make a commitment, yes or no, and they delayed long enough that we weren't able to get it done before the school year started. So the board expressed an interest that we try to find some funds to redirect for that for this year, or at least pending approval from the state, that we could use these funds, the food service funds for this purpose, and the amount is about $25,000. So to fund both of these, staff took a look at the priorities that had been approved, and there's a one-time priority that originally was requested to update the Cisweb program over this year and next, of $1 million in total, but a half a million this year. The board, when they approved the priority in, I believe, April, might have been May, approved the full million for this year. So staff's recommendation, based on the board's request, would be that we redirect $325,000 from that project this year, so that we could complete the, we could fund the student fee piece and the nutrition program. That would mean that the board would have to look at possibly the priority for '15-'16 for, to replace those funds for the Cisweb project as it goes forward. So that's staff's recommendation in that area. Additionally, the board, at the April 30th meeting, approved $3 million of one-time funds for '14-'15 to purchase approximately 20 school buses for our aging fleet of 40 buses that each has approximately half a million miles. The funding that was approved by the board in April would purchase about 20 buses this year. Because of some of the changes that came since that, particularly from the state and the final state budget where funds that we anticipated, or expenditures that we, and had anticipated in the final state budget, particularly contributions to PERS and STIRS, had changed our outlook on finance. So what we talked about doing at that time originally, there were two options that were brought to the board, a one-time amount to buy a portion of the buses, or a larger amount, and specifically, we're looking at something about $500,000 a year for a 10-year lease to purchase about 31 of the 40 buses. The board at the time made the decision to go the route to buy 20, using $3 million. You know, because of the changes in the state budget, staff has gone back and looked at that, and because of those changes, staff would recommend that the board consider not spending $3 million of current year one-time dollars, but to give staff direction to enter into a lease to purchase up to 31 buses with a 10-year lease, which would return about $1 million and a half of one-time dollars back to the fund for this multi-year projection. So those are the two pieces in response to board discussions and requests, and so I'll take any comments and ask the board for approval of any or all of them.
Okay, thank you. And you are right on target to say that there were some changes right at the end of the fiscal year last year from the state that really did have an impact on our district budget, and we did have to reopen some of this. And one of the, what you're bringing forward tonight is restructuring our bus purchase to a bus lease, which, these are one-time dollars, and this would reduce that amount and enable us to fund a, the student fee program, which is required by the state, as well as fund the nutrition education program transportation that was already calendared for this year with a grant, and that was another last minute issue that came up. So another one-time funding. So I will open that up to, did I summarize that okay?
Yep.
Okay. Open that up to the board for questions or comments.
You got any questions?
I think, you know, I remember voting for this, and my initial concerns was related to the aging fleet that we have. What would be helpful is if you could maybe put a number of new buses as opposed to what we would have had, so that I have a better understanding. Does that make sense?
Under the two options?
Yeah, there's two different options.
Yeah, the total buses is 40 million, and then under the approved, the board, the priority that was approved, the $3 million, that would replace about 20 of those buses, about half. Under the lease program, it would be up to about 31. It just depends on the leasing rates we can get and that type of thing.
Any other questions, or Mr. Pierce? Oh, I didn't see you. I looked.
Thank you. It won't be long before we'll be in the budget process again.
That's correct.
And I would hope that we have learned a lesson, and that since student fees is not an option, that we don't find ourselves in the same position next year that we're finding ourselves this year, and that it just be included in the budget, as one would include the cost for benefits or any other item for which we don't have any discretion. I think it's hard for people to, not in transportation situation, because they'll end up with more buses than under the decision to be made. But when you tell people, here's your allocation, then you turn around and take some of it away for them. I don't think that that's quite palatable. So I hope that this is not a situation that occurs next year.
Sure.
I remember when it first came before us and for approval, and this was the amount that was recommended, but the board decided that we wanted to spend more money, or to buy more buses and spend more money. And I was the only one that voted no, so for particularly this reason. So I would caution this board that in the future, when it's making large decisions of a big, large amounts like that, to make sure that we have the money before we could, before we spend it and get people's hopes up. Because I know buses are very, very important, and it's not that I was against buses at that time, but it was just whether or not we had the money to do that. So, and I think that the plan that we're going to have going forward is the prudent one.
Sure.
Could you please give the community, the audience, a little history about the buses and how old they are? I'm not sure if the community knows how old they are.
Brought an expert.
I don't want to scare anybody.
Okay.
They run well, they're well maintained.
Right, number one.
In our big bus fleet, we have 70.
We'll introduce Jokha, our director of transportation. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. In our large bus fleet, so our large transit buses, we have 70 of those buses. In January, 41 of them will be between 23 and 27 years old. We have, most of them are about, they're over the 400,000 or over the 500,000 mile mark. In many states, if you go to it, they have restrictions. They'll say 12 to 15 years is how long you can run those. In California, we don't have any restrictions, and we do maintain them very well. But the fact is, they're 27 years old. These are 1988 models, and you can't tell, I promise, when you look at them. Our CHP inspector was there today, and he reminded me, we paint them, they're yellow, we maintain them, but they're tired. Not too many of us are driving 1988 vehicles. They will have seat belts, they will meet the new federal standards, they'll have the higher seat backs. There's a little reduced seating, the capacity will go down to 78 from 84, so we will deal with that in some of our sites or field trips. We'll have better fuel efficiency. There'll be, every bus we have has a particulate trap on for clean fuel, but these will come with built-in. It's not one where we'll have to plug them in at night and try to burn those off, or be out traveling and have to stop to have that regeneration process. So I say, I think the hard part, we talked about bringing in older buses and a new one to show you the difference, and I'm not sure everybody here would see the glaring difference, but I will tell you that we will see it in our air quality, in our efficiency. And quite frankly, these are, I know our priorities the last eight years have not been replacing buses, but we are at a wall now where we're going to hit the wall. We have buses, we can't get parts. And it's really little disheartening to be putting in a $20,000 engine in a bus that's not worth five.
And I think that is why we approved it to begin with.
Absolutely.
Because of what you just described.
Very compelling story.
Thank you.
I have another question. The issue I have also, another issue, is field trips. Now, is this a line item just for field trips for this particular nutrition elementary level? What happens, is there a budget for the middle schools and high schools also?
Programs only at elementary. I could have Michelle Drake come up and give you some more details if that would be helpful.
Right, I mean, I mean, is this a total for...
Not secondary, it's just elementary.
Elementary, but do we need more money to put aside for junior high field trips, high school field trips?
This is a specific program, and I think...
This is the ongoing program.
We've had quite a bit of information on it, quite a few emails, and quite a few PCs on it from staff, that this is something that's been going on for a long time. It was just became aware that it was not going to be refunded by the original grant for this year.
Sure.
Currently, for this particular program, we don't, there aren't field trips that we provide through nutrition education for middle schools and high schools. It is not part of the current nutrition education program. This program is based first grade through sixth grade, where we provide field trips to both the central kitchen, local farmers markets, local grocery stores, and local farms for those grade levels, so that they get their hands-on experience on healthy eating and active living and just overall good health. So that's why there isn't middle school and high school, because traditionally in the program for the last 20 years, we've not done field trips for those two age groups.
And it's fifth grade, and how many kids?
It's actually, it's first through sixth, and it is, we did three, how many trips did we do last year? Off the top of my head, it affects, I believe we did, I don't even have the number in front of me.
9,000 students.
9,000 students last year we transported on field trips.
Okay. I guess my question wasn't clear. What I'm wondering about, what's the total budget for elementary buses' fees for students that can't afford it? And at elementary school, high school, and junior high?
We, there is no budget for students that can't afford trips. That's part of the process as they plan the trips. They make sure that everyone's able to go, and it's done on a class or group-by-group basis. So there's no budget for field trips.
Okay. So as of today, we do not have a budget for high school students going to colleges if they want to do an onsite college trip?
They do that.
But it's usually done at the site level, and they contract through our transportation department to go. The only regular ongoing budget for transportation that comes to mind is the athletic piece, where they transport them to the athletic events. But the school sites, different school sites will have their clubs have different arrangements. I could have Tina come up and talk to you about what goes on at a school.
I think we're going to keep back on the topic.
This is a very important topic.
Well, it could be an important topic, and we can bring it up at the end of the meeting, but we're going to talk about what this is before us on nutrition education. So if you will, we'll kind of come back to this, and if we can bring that up at the end of the meeting for future items. Sure.
A quick question of Michelle. You know, I think, you know, all of us had received a lot of wonderful communication from staff that's been involved with the program. Because of the delay, did we have to delay any trips, or?
We have delayed probably six to eight, five trips right now? Five trips to this point right now. And we have communicated with the teachers that if we get approval, we will reschedule their trips.
Okay, that's great.
So that is the goal, that they do get the trip in.
Good, thanks. Thanks, Michelle.
Thank you. It's been a very, very successful program. We appreciate your work and Ms. Gaffney's work on this. I think I'm going to call for the question on this. That means whoever would like to make a motion?
So moved.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the staff recommendation to restructure the bus... the bus purchase to bus lease, lease to free up funds for, one-time funds for student fees, and for the nutrition education field trip program associated with the grant. I'll take a roll call vote on this.
Aye.
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 Yes.
I support it one-hundred percent. Yes.
Okay, motion is passed, and we'll get the buses rolling here. Next, we are postponing the Career Technical Education Advisory Committee report. And going on to Mr. Fagan again, you are up for the next three items. The unaudited actual income and expenditures.
Okay. Thank you again. Tonight, I'll be presenting the proposed 2013 unaudited actuals. This is the report that is, finally settles up all of our budgets for 2014, and we'll do a comparison of how we did last year on the budgets, and we'll talk about some of the differences in what we projected versus where we landed. We'll talk about changes to the estimated actuals, and then a budget update, which just brings a new balance forward, since we now have final unaudited numbers for 2013-14. So as we always do at this time of year, we like to go through and talk about where our money comes from and how we spend it. So, this chart shows that in the general fund, both restricted and unrestricted dollars, we get fifty-one percent of state aid, that's the money that actually comes to us from the state. Fourteen percent, we have to designate out as EPA, the state tells us how much that is each year. That's the piece that the state requires that we spend in the classroom. It's a condition of Prop 30 that was passed several years ago. And the remaining, the next number, the property taxes, is about fourteen percent. So those three pieces combined are our total state funding through the LCFF. So that's the total amount that we received, and that's the different components of it as we have to delineate it and report it to the state. We get about seventeen percent in state, federal and state categorical programs, Title I, Title II, those types of things. We get a little piece from lottery, and then another small piece of revenue from other stuff, which might be the E-rate program, and just various miscellaneous things that may come into the district. So, that's where we get our money from, each, got our money from last year. This talks about what we spent it on. So we spent eighty-six percent on salary and benefits, we spent four percent on books and supplies, nine percent on costs, operating costs, which would be any type of service, utility, those types of things, and one percent on capital outlay. Those are items that we buy that have a useful life. I think it's over five or ten years that we would capitalize and depreciate in our financial statements. So that's what we bought, and this tells us a little bit about what, the reason we bought it, if you will. So we spent sixty-eight percent on instruction, that's in the classroom, teachers, aides, paraprofessionals, that type of thing. Related services, those are the other onsite services, principals, vice principals, those types of things that are related at the school site predominantly. Pupil services, those are things like counselors, I believe transportation is in there, so there are other pupil services. General administrative, that's the district office, and all the pieces that support the district as a whole. Plant services, that's Mr. Pierce's areas, routine restricted maintenance, custodial grounds, those types of things. And then the other outgo, that's just everything that doesn't fall into one of those categories. So it's a very small, small amount. But that's the type of uses that we had for our dollars for last year. So for the whole district, breaks each fund out, the big piece, as one would expect, is the general fund, a little over five-hundred million dollars, half a billion dollars, if that makes more sense. But you can see where the cafeteria, and other big areas, facilities, where our construction dollars are spent, and then self-insurance fund, that's predominantly our workers' comp funding. So, just a brief reminder to the board, and an update, that each year, and we did it a couple of board meetings ago, for this year, that we have to bring to the board the EPA, which is not the Environmental Protection Account, it's the Education Protection Account. It was a piece of Prop 30 that required us to spend it. We allocate TK through three-grade classroom teacher salary and benefits to meet this requirement. It's not new money on top of other money we're getting, it's just the state requires, because of Prop 30, that we move these expenditures into a particular resource code to identify them as classroom instruction expenditures, to meet the, to be in compliance with Prop 30. So, the only other piece I'd want to make the board aware of is that the amount they give us this early in the year that the board approved can and did change last year, and it went from, I think about fifty-eight million is what we had the board approve in October of last year, and the final number was sixty-nine million. And that just meant that we allocated to that unique resource a little more money out of the TK through three. So, it's kind of a per-functionary thing that we do, but it's a requirement of law, so we just wanted to make the board aware that the amount changed, but there's no requirement to bring it back to the board to approve the changed amount. So let's talk about what the variances between what we had estimated for this year and what we actually came, we actually saw in the actual. So, for, on the revenue side, part of the LCFF funding was that, in the area of special ed, if you're not aware of it, most ADA is counted at P2, which is April. The special ed students, we actually collect ADA for them all year round, so it's an extended school year for them. And we weren't sure how LCFF was going to treat that, so we had an estimate, but it was a little bit more conservative than what we finally saw. So, we saw some increased ADA, about a hundred-and-eighty-nine, more than we'd projected. And the gap closure, which is, if we think about LCFF, we're here, we have a target, what we now talk about every year is gap closures. So the gap closure was a point-two-two percent better than what we anticipated, so our revenues were about one-point-six million better than we had anticipated, that's ongoing revenue. The ADA portion of it, we, the funding model for special education, AB 602, that's been here for about fifteen years now, sixteen years, it uses total ADA for the district as well, so that additional ADA increased our special education revenue, so about a half a million dollars in special education, additional special education revenue related to the extra, additional ADA. One-time E-rate and lottery revenue, lottery revenue we estimate as best we can, based on information we get from the state, but there's always, you know, it'll fluctuate up and down when we get the final numbers in. And then the E-rate, and that's a rebate, if you will, that we get on phone services, and T1 lines, and data lines, and that type of things. So, those things can fluctuate a little bit, and this year it was, between the two of them, it was about three-hundred thousand dollars. So those are one-type, one-time things, we wouldn't expect them to see those continue, because like I said, one year they're up, they're down, so it can go either way. But the first two, the one-point-six and the half a million, we consider to be ongoing new revenue for the district, that we would ultimately put in our multi-year projection. The estimated transition attrition calculation, the board will recall that our system projects all salaries being paid to all people all year long. We know that there's vacant positions, and times when substitutes are used for positions, so this is that estimated amount of about five million dollars that we expect to drop through to the bottom each year. And it usually runs between about a million and a half and two million dollars. So, we budgeted five million. It came in short, and when I say a million and a half, it's usually short, it has been the last couple of years, but at one point, it truly was five million dollars. So at some point, we would expect those fall-through numbers, if you will, for vacant positions, to get back up to that. So that's why we've left it in place, and we know that in a district our size, there's usually other things that will offset that as we go forward. So if we see a trend where it starts to getting too big, we'd probably want to look at making an adjustment to how much the country is. So EGUSD retiree, these are the employees that are not part of Egbert. They retired before the year 2000, it might have been 2000 or before. And these are employees that get the same benefits as Egbert, but the district pays for them on a pay-as-you-go basis, because the pool is finite. It's the people that retired prior to 2000, fourteen years ago. So predominantly, unless they were fifty in 2000, they're over sixty-five, so they're part of the Medi-Cal coverage that we provide. And if the board will recall, in this, in last year's renewal, United Healthcare came in for the over sixty-fives, predominantly for Egbert, but it affected our retirees too, they came in with a huge reduction to the over sixty-five rate with similar type of benefits. We knew this was coming. We estimated about a half a million dollars in the new year budget, but when we got to the end of the year, you know, and looked at the actual expenditures of the budget, it was clearly a million. So, a half a million of that million-dollar savings last year, we will rebudget as an expenditure saving in the new year, so, and it'll be an ongoing expenditure. Again, that's a finite group that won't get any bigger as we go forward. Summer school, summer school runs on a year that starts on June 30th and ends on May 31st each year. So, we allocated, the board allocated three-point-two million dollars in last year. They spent about eight-hundred thousand of it in June, then they had expenditures for summer school in July and August, as well as intercession for year-round schools. So, this two-point-four million dollars that wasn't spent in June will be carried over and rebudgeted to cover summer school and intercession expenditures up through May of next year. So it runs on a one-month-off cycle, but that's just the way, kind of the nature of summer school, the way it is. So, we'd expect that unexpended amount to get rebudgeted in the new year as an expenditure for summer school. The unexpended balance from the EL and the site budgets, this was a unique situation last year. We had the EL dollars that carried over from the old restricted EL program that we made sure we spent first, so they were off our books, and any EL dollars going forward would be the new part of the LCFF, and less restrictive, I mean, they have to support, you know, the things that they're budgeted for, but there's, the things that they can be used for are a lot less restrictive. Between that, and maybe, you know, the first year of the LCAP and not being, getting a little bit caught up in the transition of the new year, I think that's what a lot of that is, I think it was new to some principals on what they could and couldn't use the money for. Mr. Sherudy has talked with staff, and this year we'll make a concerted effort to go back and look at, you know, where it didn't get spent and why, and this year we'll make it our goal to spend those dollars as they're allocated for the supplemental and the EL portions that are part of the LCAP. So, it was about one-point-nine million dollars, which, by the way, on the old categorical, when it was restricted, that's not a large amount for that. So it was restricted before, so we didn't see it in this type of report, but now, as it's unrestricted, because those are now all part of the LCFF. We had unexpended dollars from textbooks. The textbook plan is out there. It could be that books that were supposed to arrive on June 30th didn't arrive till July 1st, and so they wouldn't have got spent last year, because it's the date of receipt of them. We know that Common Core, it's difficult to find Common Core-approved instructional materials, so I think there's some hesitation as we go out to buy to make sure that that's the case. So those are the kind of the things that we've heard, that I heard might have been reason for this. Those will get rebudgeted in the new year. There's a plan for expenditures, it includes unrestricted dollars that have been allocated, as well as restricted dollars, some of the lottery dollars are restricted for instructional materials, and we use that for textbooks as well. So the final piece is energy and utility savings, predominantly energy savings. We had the presentation from Mr. Pierce here earlier, but, you know, some of the other utilities provided a little bit of a savings last year, so if we're saving energy, it may be spreading to some other areas, but we, the energy program focuses on, specifically on the electricity part of it. So the total difference between what we had estimated actuals and what we actually spent is about seven-point-one million dollars. So, what, our estimated actuals showed an undesignated reserve of about sixteen-point-two million dollars. So, we've listed that at the top of this slide, we put in the amount from the previous slide of the change from our operations. Transportation, this is not a new expenditure, transportation used to be in the restricted side of the budget. So with LCFF now, it's moved into the unrestricted. So they have an inventory of parts that'll go down now, if we, since we've approved the buses, but they have an inventory of parts that wasn't included on our side of the budget, so we have to, the money's not gone, it just has to be set aside to cover the value of those parts in the inventory. It's the same as if we're prepaying an expense, or we have cash on hand, those things, we have to reserve monies out of our budget to cover those. So that's, that's a one-time change that we'd expected to, that, just because of the change in the way LCFF done. ROP, the district set aside money for ROP, so that we have, as needs come up in the career technical area, we have money set aside of it. And so that's, that's an amount that we were directed to set aside, we anticipate continuing to set it aside, and as needs come up in those areas, those are dollars that are set aside for that, reserved for that. The next piece, Rob just gave out a bunch of checks, that's the hundred thousand dollars of checks Rob's going to be spending. That'll get rebudgeted as an expenditure allocated out to the sites for them to spend. The summer school piece, the intercession, two-point-four, the remaining, the three-point-two is about two-point-four million dollars, that'll get rebudgeted as an expenditure in the new years. And then there's other, some other miscellaneous adjustments that might be, and some reserves, and the most, the simplest example of one of the miscellaneous ones is that, you know, in the van pool, it has a self-sustaining component to it, so that the rate we charge per mile provides a little bit of profit, if you will, so that those funds can get set aside, reserved, and so when the vans run out, we don't come to the board and say we need to buy three or four vans. Jill has an ongoing process where she replaces the vans with those funds. So, of the, as a deduct from the amounts above, as either money that needs to be set aside as a reserve or rebudgeted as expenditures, about four-point, four-point-one million dollars to adjust the reserve for budget priorities. So you take the sixteen-point-two plus the seven-point-one, subtract the four-point-one, and our adjusted reserve for budget priorities, our undesigned reserve, is nineteen-point-two million dollars. So on this slide, I'll direct you to the last two columns. You can see where the sixteen-point-two that was at the top of the previous slide came from. You can see now that we've taken and set aside the three-point-six million dollars for those items that, not the first one, but the next four down, where they'll either be, continue to be reserved, or they'll be rebudgeted at the next budget report that we give to the district. And we've set those funds aside, so that we don't, they don't show as available in the ending fund balance. So you can see the nineteen-point-two, which ties back to the nineteen-point-two at the bottom of the last page. I'm sorry? I'm in the bottom right-hand corner, I was looking at the last two columns. Sixteen-point-two? I don't think I have a pointer. I mean, I have one for this, but I don't think it shows up on your screen. You okay, Mr. Press? So, remind the board, we always like to connect the dots, the multi-year projection for the forty-five-day revise. You can see that we have the surplus deficits, five million deficit, ten million surplus, almost eleven million, six-point-eight million. But I'm going to direct you to one number, it's in the first column, and it's twenty-seven million, two-oh-nine, seven-ninety-one. When we do the unaudited actuals, the primary change that we make is that we update the balance forward from what we estimated at our estimated actuals to what we now have with our unaudited actuals. So if you'll look at that same piece, that same estimated beginning fund balance, it's now an actual beginning fund balance of thirty-four-point-two million dollars. That's the twenty-seven plus the seven million dollars that's been added back into the beginning balance. So we haven't changed the surplus deficit going forward. The way this slide is set up, the three-point-six million dollars is not going to be rebudgeted three times, but to get an accurate amount of how much is available in one-time dollars at the end of the third year, the thirty-one-point-five million dollars, we have to reserve it until we actually move it back up or set it up as a reserve. Otherwise, it'll overstate the three-point-one, the thirty-one million dollars. So what we're looking at with just a simple adjustment of the balance coming forward of the additional seven million dollars, and a reserve of those amounts that either need to be, continue to be reserved or rebudgeted in the new year, you're looking at a surplus at the end of 2016-17 of about six-point-eight million dollars, and a fund balance of thirty-one-point-five million dollars. And so, for the unaudited actuals presentation and report, that's the adjustment that we'll make. we'll make. What we'll do now is take any other changes that we've become aware of since we did the forty-five day revise, and we have already had C-beds. We'll update our C-beds for our actual student counts and make adjustments for student counts, any teacher staffing changes that may have come about because of the student counts. And at first interim, we'll bring back a revised multi-year projection that will show, will reflect the changes that we saw from unaudited actuals. So, for example, the revised multi-year projection will include, at, at first interim, will include the additional revenues that we recognized last year for the ADA, for special ed and regular ed, and the additional reduction in our contribution to our pre-two-thousand retirees. So, that's my report. I'll be happy to answer, answer any questions, and then the next steps, as we always do, we keep the board aware of what's coming down the road.
Are there any questions on the unaudited actual income and expenditures?
Yeah.
Mr. Fortina?
Thank you. I, I think, what I want to start off with is just a note that, that the board was provided, along with the public, with the, the unaudited actuals for study purposes, and I asked several questions, and I was, and I appreciated the fact that I got the answers to those questions, but it's important to state the fact that questions were asked. I think it was important to note that we did have an increase in special ed ADA revenue, but I also believe it's important to recognize the fact that while that's a good thing, it doesn't offset the expenditures that we make above and beyond what our income is, and that is one thing that we really need to look at in the future. We've talked, or I've talked specifically about the formation of a coalition that will look at the contributions made by the state and the federal government, because they're not living up to the agreements that were made. And this district, right now, is expending in excess of thirty-five million dollars out of general fund for special ed. We will always meet our obligations to special education children, but those are dollars that, that could be used in myriad of ways if the feds and the, and the states lived up to their obligations. I also was concerned about the fact that we had unexpended monies in the area of EL and supplemental. Monies, monies set aside for targeted populations, and I, and I was satisfied and pleased with the explanation is, is how that came about, and, and the fact that we have lived up to our obligations, so I think that's important. The last question I have centers on transportation, and since transportation now gets to enjoy being with most of the folks in the general fund. Have there been discussions with respect to whether or not we will treat transportation as it has always been treated, or are they going to need to compete with everybody else for the available dollars?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure I understand the question, Mr. Fortina.
Transportation, transportation has, has benefited from sitting off to the side in that the dollars that went into transportation couldn't be touched by anyone, correct? There were designated transportation.
Well, well, I think that, that the fact that we receive less than, a little less than half of...
Well, that's another problem.
Okay.
Yes, which I recognize.
So, I, I think they've been competing in the past, because, because they haven't been fully funded. They've, they've had to revive for the same dollars, it's just the contribution as opposed to the direct expenditure.
But now they get folded into general fund.
Yeah, and so does their funding.
And it makes the competition...
Yeah.
...a different game.
Sure.
So, I guess the answer's yes. They'll, they'll get to compete along with everyone else.
Yeah, I think they have all along, but yes, definitely they'll be more visible and, and as part of being directly related in, in the expenditure.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
No, I really didn't have any other questions. Mr. Fortina answered, or he brought out the question about special ed, that I was very concerned with the encroachment on a general fund. It's going to be a real problem.
And we should be.
Yeah, as we move forward, so, thank you.
I have no questions. Thank you.
No questions. I, I know that Mr. Fortina and I actually met with our interim superintendent last week, and so we were able to discuss some of our outstanding questions at that meeting. I think of noteworthy, it is, Mr. Sorudy, if you want to at least just sort of remind the gist of, not so much our conversation, but, you know, we have a lot of, you know, different sites with, and not everybody's experienced in doing budgets at, at a particular site, and that's where some of the, some of the issues in terms of why, why weren't all the funds used, and, you know, why is there a surplus, and so forth, and so, and that, those are just, you know, sort of human conditions, and I, and I, but I appreciated that explanation, and I think maybe for some of the other colleagues who didn't have the benefit of that discussion, if you would sort of refresh some of the other folks here. Thank you.
Sure, I'm happy to do that, and, and Mr. Fagan hit on the, the main points. I, I think there's, there's no single reason. There's a variety of reasons. One is that we had one foot in the old and one foot in the new. The other is when, when we are able to, and, and I should say that in previous years, when we would, those monies, when they were restricted, if we didn't spend them, we were giving them back, and we never gave money back. And so, that isn't something that we did. And so, when we recognized that we were going to have monies that were going to carry over, we were, we weren't addressing it in the, in the same way that we had done in the past. I think, and again, some of the variety of reasons. This is not necessarily a matter of we have site administrators who are not knowledgeable about spending the money. We do have new, new administrators, and we certainly work with them. And so, it's not a single matter of the site principles. It's also when we have knowledge of the budget and when we're able to release that information to the sites, because we don't release one hundred percent. Oftentimes, we're holding back because it's unclear. Last year, for example, we were expecting, in, in certain title funds, we were expecting those monies to be reduced. We found out that they weren't going to be reduced, so we had more monies that, that became available, so there was that circumstance. And also, one of the things that we are, we are shifting out of is, in the not-too-distant past, we all, as a district, and then, and it certainly carried over into the site, there was such uncertainty in terms of the amount of money that we were going to be receiving. And that uncertainty was not that we were going to be receiving more, it was how much less are we going to be receiving? So, people were saving for the rainy day, wondering what do I have to do to ensure that I can maintain the program? So, we're also shifting away from that, and folks are realizing that while it's certainly not completely sunny skies ahead, the, the outlook is very different than it was back just a few years ago. And so, those combinations of things, and then lastly, our increased understanding, actually, it's one of the benefits of, of the LCAP process, is that we're, the entire budgetary process, the way it should always function is that you develop your instructional program, and then you build your budget around the instructional program, but when you're cutting to the degree we were, that actually completely gets thrown out the window. You're operating on what is the budget allowing us to actually be able to do? And so, we're reverting back to that model of programming driving budgeting, and so, while certainly we, we have every expectation of every dollar that's allocated for students in a given year is spent, that's exactly what we're working toward, and that, those combinations of circumstances won't be quite the same as they are next year, so we have every, I have every confidence, and we have every confidence, that those monies will be expended for the students in that given year. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think that that was very helpful, because I was a benefit of that dialogue, but I think everyone else, you know, it enhances some of the information that Mr. Fagan shared, so thank you for that recap.
I don't have any questions, but I just want to thank you for a very informative and understandable report, so, thank you.
Regarding this, is this unexpected, unexpended balance from site EL, does that include also low-income and foster youth, or just EL?
It would be both. It would be...
All three.
It would be supplemental, combined supplemental and EL funds that were allocated to the site.
Okay. Would that mean that this fiscal year, twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, they would get another one point nine?
They, they've been rebudgeted in the new year based on the LCAP. This money, the board would have to take action to rebudget that into the new year, if that's what they wanted to do, but right now, that's not what we would do with it. They have a new allocation for this year.
What's the new allocation for this year?
I, I'd have to go look. It's in, it's part of the LCAP, so i- if you go in there and you look, you'll see where that, those funds are allocated, but off the top of my head, Mr. Perez, I don't know.
So, would this go back, the one point nine, would that go back to the principals and, and get round two, so, so they could spend it?
The, the board could certainly make that decision if they wanted to, but right now, the board hasn't acted on any of the undesignated balance, including this amount.
Okay.
So, right now, it's in the undesignated balance.
And who's responsible giving those instructions to the principals and how to spend it?
I, I think it comes from a myriad of places. I'll ask Mark to help, but my understanding, you know, there's the learning support services, there's secondary and elementary education, and they all kind of work together to, to spend those funds.
Yeah, Mr. Fagan hit it. The, the Department of Learning Support Services historically has been, these funds were, in the past, these were comp ed and EIA funds, and so those were managed collectively by Mr. Fagan's department, as well as Learning Support Services, which, when I put my other hat on, as the Associate Superintendent of Education Services, it's part of ed services. And then, we certainly collaborate, because the, those site plans are what dictate those expenditures, and those site plans are monitored and ultimately approved by both Learning Support Services, but also in collaboration with Ms. Cherry and Ms. Penna. And so, it's really a collaborative effort in terms of continuing to educate our principals. The, the benefit that we now have is those restrictions are, are lessened, and so it's less, the, the training is less in terms of, here are all the stipulations and guidelines of how to spend the money. Now, the training is how to develop an effective plan and implement your plan.
So, when I go to my community meeting budgets with a couple of weeks, I could, can I tell them we have one point nine million dollars to spend?
No.
Extra? That we didn't spend?
It's, yes, it's part of the undesignated balance.
And it's up to them to advocate for that money?
Well, yeah, the, the board ultimately makes the decision on spending money, so, yeah, the, they could advocate to the board, yeah.
Okay. Another issue I had is that ROP, now, ROP, is that a job training program or vocational training, classroom setting?
It's my understanding that these, this, this amount is from the old restricted piece that's come forward. It's no longer restricted, but the district asked that, or it was, at some point, the decision was made to set this, and I'll have, I'd have to go back and find it, but it's money that's set aside to support both the ROP, which works together with the, the partnership academies and the technical institutes. So, this is money that is there if they should ever need funding. It's not restricted, it's in the unrestricted general fund, but we were asked to set it aside, because it was that piece that came from the old ROP funding model, and they haven't, they still have a million dollars of that left they haven't spent.
So, my question is, are those like paid positions for students in the summer program?
It's a, the ROP program?
Yes.
I couldn't tell you. I could have Tina come talk a little bit more about it. I know it's like FFA and those types of things, but...
Regional occupation program?
Yeah.
For training, yeah.
Actually, the ROP program, the responsibility for the ROP program is being shifted from the county to the district. It is a compilation of courses, of career technical education training courses. It may include some paid internships, but predominantly, it is a variety of classes that are offered throughout our district, some of them leading to career certification for students, for example, the phlebotomy program over at Rio Casodaro. Students who successfully complete that program can test for certification, which would allow them to go out and get jobs. So, it is, it is CTE training. As I say, there may be some positions, but that is not predominantly what it is.
So, okay. Well, I'd like to maybe have a report on that issue, because, you know, if, if that's for students within our district for summer youth job placements, I like to make sure that that is actually spent, and these kids, the students get experience in, in, in these vocations, such as Hal Tech at Valley High and various other academies. That's an excellent job career development program, and it should be spent... Not reserved.
It is being spent to support our CTE program in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Fagan, for an excellent and very thorough presentation. I think it's obvious that we have undergone a significant transition in the world of school funding, and there are some unusual circumstances, and, and definitely, we're all being educated on the, the changes and the, the impacts. The unadded, audited actual income for two thousand thirteen, fourteen, the income and expenditures, I'd like to call for a motion to approve that.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand thirteen, fourteen unaudited actual income and expenditures, and I'll do a roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion's carried unanimously, and now, Mr. Fagan, you're still up here. I hope your, I hope your leg is okay, recovering.
Good, I'm moving around. The doc said move around, keep the blood flowing.
Oh, dear. Okay, so, next on the item is our resolution for re-adopting and increasing the two thousand thirteen, fourteen GAN limit and adopting the two thousand fourteen, fifteen GAN limit.
This is a, a, a resolution we have to do every year. It's based on the, the prior year. It establishes the new GAN limit for this year and identifies last year's and our expenditures subject to the GAN limit. The GAN limit was originally established, as you can see, in the, in the discussion items here, a long time ago, to limit how much schools can spend one year over the next, and I think more recently, that has not been an issue of school districts overspending one year to the next. So, it's a little more perfunctory, perfunctory now, but it's still a requirement that says that we have to each year, look at our actual expenditures, look at the expenditures, the recalculated GAN limit, and make a comparison, and we have to have spent less than what the GAN limit is. Basically, we take last year, the twelve, thirteen GAN limit, we apply a couple of factors to it, inflation factors, to bump it up, and we make sure that we spend less in it. So, this year, the GAN limit for thirteen, fourteen, the year we just closed, was four hundred million dollars and some change, and our appropriations that were, expenditures that were subject to it were three hundred and eighty-six million dollars, so we're in compliance with the GAN limit, and I would ask the board to discuss and/or approve.
Are there any questions on this resolution, the procedural issue? I believe we do this every year.
Yes, I have a question. On the transfer to charter schools in lieu of property taxes, line nine and fifteen on that report?
Yep.
The three hundred and eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty-two and twenty cents, that's what we give back to charter schools, or what?
No, we actually receive their, the county doesn't send the property taxes for those students directly to the charter school. They send them to us on top of what our property taxes, so we're kind of a middleman for that. So, we take them and we just transfer them to the charter schools.
So, the county gives that to us, based on ADA?
Yeah, over and above our taxes. So, if we were to get a million dollars in taxes, they give us a million and five, and we have to send that five on through, for the charter, the extra five is the charter, and we have to transfer that through to them. So, it's just a pass, a pass-through for our district.
Okay. And then, up, up above and on the current year GAN ADA on B two, it says total charter school ADA from, I guess it's from Form A, line C two. Now, what does the two fifty-one, two hundred, two hundred fifty-one?
Those, those are the students in our charter school, our Elk Grove charter.
That's the ADA? They each, they generate?
For our district, yeah. Actually, it's for our, their charter school. They're, they're not part of the general fund, they have their own fund, Fund Nine.
And so, so, two hundred fifty-one times X amount would, would equal three eighteen from, from the county?
No, 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 no. Again, if you think about, we, you know, if you think about that pie chart where I said we get state aid, we get EPA, and we get property taxes...
Right.
...of their total revenue, this is just that, their property tax portion of it. So, they still get state aid.
Right, I understand.
They still get, have an EPA piece, so... So this is just one of the components. It's not, they get much more than that.
This is from just the county then?
It's just the county, a local piece.
Just, okay, I see.
Okay.
That's it.
Call for a motion to adopt the GAN limit resolution?
Make a motion. A second.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously by all present. Item 14 is our second reading of our environmental determination for Anatolia II, our elementary school out in the Sunrise area.
Thank you, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Saruti and Ms. Heine. This is, as President Cox pointed out, a follow-up item to your September 16th board meeting. It is our California Environmental Quality Act compliance for the new Anatolia II elementary school. The proposed project was covered. It includes the development of a 10.5 acre proposed future school site. So as promised, the board at our last meeting, September 16th, you will definitely receive some public comment, and you had nothing from the public, rather five different agencies. They are all comments that we would expect from agencies, ensuring that we're going to comply with whatever rules and regulations that they might have in place. So specifically, the written comment that you did receive during your 30-day public comment came from the California Water Boards, the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District, the Department of Toxic Substances Control, and the California Department of Transportation. And somewhat in a new twist, we actually received a comment from WAC Sacramento. And so through Ms. Dixon's work, she's went out and made friends, and then those friends in suit submit letters on our Environmental Quality Act documents. So I can assure the board that all the requests that were made via comment will be followed. Our responses to those comments were along the same lines. They were provided to the board two Fridays ago in your packet. So other than that, we received no public comment, which is a good thing. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. But again, at this point, it's a follow-up to September 16th. I'd ask that you adopt the resolution before you, which not only certifies your California Environmental Quality Act requirement, but also your Title V requirements under the California Department of Education, which meets a number of certifications that the school site is approved by the California Department of Ed and meets a number of various factors in order to be approved.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And I think it's fitting on the walk to school day.
Yeah.
All of the comments seem to be pertaining to pedestrian and biking safety and access. So very wanting a school site to be walkable and rightable, so. But with that, I'll open up for any comments or questions. We've had a couple, it seems like a while to review this, but you've got the new information too.
Yes.
Do you have one? Nope, okay.
I'll move that we adopt resolution number 13 approving the findings and determinations of the initial study, adopting the mitigated negative declaration and the mitigation monitoring program for the Anatolia II elementary school site.
A second.
That's a long motion, and the motion has been, oh, we haven't approved it yet. I'll call for a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion is passed to approve the environmental determination for Anatolia II elementary school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Great work. Then, Mr. Steinhauer, we have Red Ribbon Week resolution, and we will call for a motion after your presentation.
Good evening, President Cox, members of the board, Superintendent Saruti and Ms. Heine. Tonight, I'm here to request endorsement of the annual Red Ribbon Week during the last week of October. Red Ribbon Week is the oldest and largest proactive drug prevention program in the nation and reaches millions of Americans every year. Red Ribbon Week is an awareness campaign about the dangers of drug abuse and is a way for our students, staff, and community to unite and take a visible stand against illicit drugs. The resolution supports our district-wide comprehensive prevention programs and endorses the efforts in our schools to create awareness of substance abuse-related issues through this week. Student groups from Sheldon and Pleasant Grove High Schools collaborated together to develop the theme of the 2014 District Red Ribbon Week. Stand for nothing, fall for anything. Student support and Health Services Office of Youth Development prepared and distributed campaign guides for all our schools, as well as delivered wristbands enough for each school, grade six to 12, with that theme engraved on it. In general, the resolution before you recognizes the devastating effects of alcohol, tobacco, and other drug abuse in the lives of families and students, and that our schools are dedicated to assisting students learn positive ways to make healthy choices. And after your vote this evening, you too will be presented with a red ribbon wristband declaring our commitment to live drug-free.
I'll move the item.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the resolution. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion is carried unanimously, and thank you very much for your presentation and for your red ribbons. Thank you. I didn't realize it was the oldest drug prevention. And next on our agenda is Mr. Saruti with our National Bullying Prevention Month resolution.
Thank you, Madam President. While I'm pleased to certainly bring this to the board, there's a tinge of sadness because the person who used to bring this to the board is, of course, Ms. Liz Grasswitch, and today was her last day. And I speak for us all when I say publicly that certainly the services she provided, the quality of services she provided, and the level of professionalism will truly be missed. I just felt obligated to say that. But I also want to say that I've been working directly with both Suzanne and Tori, and Tori is here this evening, and they are certainly stepping up and will continue to do the terrific work providing all communication services. So thank you so much, Tori. So with that, students and student and staff safety is a top priority for the Elk Grove School District. We have developed strategies for bullying prevention and intervention to help keep students safe and ensure a healthy learning environment. The district has an extensive board policy on bullying that covers a variety of areas, including cyberbullying, bullying prevention intervention, complaints and investigation, discipline, and enforcement mechanisms. In recognition of the importance of raising awareness about bullying prevention, the Board of Education has asked to designate October as National Bullying Prevention Month.
To move that?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution that designates October as National Bullying Prevention Month. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion is carried. And I'd also like to thank you, Superintendent Saruti, for bringing up the fact that Ms. Grasswitch was not here this evening. She had her last day today, and we will definitely miss her. She's just done an incredible job for our district, our employees, and our community on many, many fronts. So we wish her well in her new career. Next is the consent agenda, and I'll have Mr. Madison read that. Did I miss something? Oh, excuse me, I did miss board reports. Okay, board reports. We'll start down with Mr. Perez. Do you have a board report, Mr. Perez?
Not entirely, but I, well, maybe I need to bring it up in the next part regarding groping of what I seen at a high school function, that students were groping others. Yeah. And I was wondering.
Maybe on items for future agendas to do conduct at student activities, something along that line?
Yes.
Okay.
No, 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 no.
Ms. Amavisca?
I've been going to, I don't have any reports saying, but I've been going to a lot of the back-to-school nights and awards ceremonies, and Paula Duncan dubbed it as my farewell tour. And it's really kind of felt like that, but it's been very nice, the receptions that I've been receiving from all the schools. But Priscilla and I today, this morning, went to the County Board of Supervisors meeting where they had a, was a Heroes of Human Services Recognition Awards, and they were celebrating our local heroes in human services. And what it was, it was honoring those individuals who have touched the lives of others through their advocacy, dedication, and efforts in human service within Sacramento County. And nominated was one of our employees, Isabel Reynoso, who most of you know that a couple of months ago she passed unexpectedly. But it was very nice that they recognized her for all that she's done for Sacramento County and what she's, the things that she's done for our school district and for our community. And I know Priscilla and I were talking that perhaps sometime we should recognize her or her family. It was her husband who was there that accepted the award today and most of the Healthy Start staff. And then Priscilla and I, it was a very, 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 very nice reception. So I don't know, maybe at some future date, we can recognize her ourselves. So, thank you.
I have something to say about that also. Yes, I read about this communications, Board Communications Number 70. It was heartwarming. So what I did, I called my local assemblyman, Dr. Pan, and asked him if he could do a resolution for us. And it usually takes three weeks, but they say they could fast-track it and have it by the next board meeting within two weeks. And so if we could possibly forward this to his office, and I could give you my email at home, the contact person, and they will write a resolution on behalf of Ms. Isabel Reynoso.
That would be really nice. I know her family and her husband would be heartfelt to have that. I attended her funeral services at the time, and I mean, there were so many people. It was beautiful.
Also, you know, I didn't have time, well, today, to call our Senate representative, but they would also do a Senate resolution also if you want to do that.
That would be a great thing for us to present at a board meeting before we leave.
Thank you. I don't have any committee reports, but since it is National Bullying Prevention Month, there is a rally this Saturday that I will be attending. I have flyers here. It's been, we've been circulating these for a while. And I know that we have a booth there, Elk Grove Unified School District has a booth there. Some of the high schools also will have, our high schools will have booths there as well. So I just brought flyers here for those who have not seen it to stop by.
No committee reports, just regular duties as assigned at visiting schools.
I attended last week the Public Schools Accountability Act Advisory Committee that I'm attending, and we're still grasping with the process attempting to revise our API as we move forward. So you'll be hearing more information on that. At the meeting, it was also brought up, I have a letter sent to Mike Kurz, the President of California State Board of Education. And basically, the support of the Common Core was by all of our colleges in California, the California State University, the University of California, and California Community Colleges. It was a nice letter that's signed by all the presidents of the colleges in California. And they're very, very optimistic that we can help close that preparation gap that exists right now as a lot of our kids are going into colleges. So I'll have this letter, maybe our link can make copies, and we can forward it to all of our board members. I just want to make one comment. It wasn't a committee, but it was an educational program at Sac County Board Dinner we had last week. We were well represented by Elk Grove Unified School District. And I want to thank too our upcoming new board member, Beth Albiani, was there in attendance as well, too. So as collectively in Northern California, we were very well represented as a Board of Education. Thank you.
I'd like to include that Mr. Hoffman was there also, our superintendent.
That's right. Our new superintendent was also in attendance. Thank you. So we, again, were well represented.
I have no reports pertaining to committee work.
And for me, Jeanette spoke about our, the award ceremony today that was very meaningful. But I did attend the Service Learning Committee, District Committee, as a board representative there. And their agenda was about the nominations that had been received throughout our district for all the great work that's going on in service learning. And the Service Learning Committee is made up of individuals that are community partners in many different areas in our community. And it's really neat to see them recognize all the great things that teachers and students are doing in our district. And we will be recognizing these people at our community board meetings. Service learning is community service that's integrated into the curriculum. So it has an additional step beyond community service. And we have, as the board members, will be sharing some really great projects in our district. In fact, it came to light that we may need to expand it because there are so many, many projects out there. So, and things that the students are doing for the community and teachers that are instrumental in providing that opportunity for students. So those, and the superintendent, would you like to have a report?
Perhaps very briefly. I'm working hard to make sure the things that are, have been continued, or the exceptional work that goes on every day in Elk Grove is continuing to, is continuing. And I'm very, very comfortable and confident that the transition, when Mr. Hoffman is coming, is going to be a very, very smooth one. We're having ongoing communications with him and realizing his attention is where it should be, which is with his current school district. But nonetheless, he's beginning to get acclimated with us as we go. One thing I do want to mention, and that is, it was not last week, I believe, the week before, Mr. Madison and myself and the Valley Regional Administration, Ms. Penna, Ms. Cherry would have been there. She was split in about three different ways, working with the McRode Partnership and some of the businesses and McRode Partnership leadership and the work that they're doing, some very, very promising activities. And I think the future will be very bright in terms of what's going to be taking place. And we certainly look forward to providing the board updates on what's happening between those businesses, the school district, the community, and in particular, directly engaging our kids with those folks.
Yeah, I just want to mention that, I want to thank Mark for being there last week, too. It was a very, very productive meeting, and I'm very optimistic as well. Thank you.
That's a great, great project. We do have an additional blue card. I'm not sure how the board wants to treat this. It wasn't, you weren't here when it was on the agenda, but if you want to take three minutes, Catherine Duran? Two minutes? You got a fan club there? But if possible, we do have a place on the agenda when the public has public comment, and that would be nice if that could be turned in by then, so thank you.
Well, I actually, I didn't, yeah, I didn't actually, I wasn't here for that, so I missed that. So, and I actually wasn't prepared, I didn't prepare anything to say tonight, so that might surprise some people. But I've been a little bit disturbed by some things that I've been witnessing on this board in the last couple of months, and I wanted to call it to your attention. So one of the things that, I actually was doing a little research on the purpose of a school board, and I actually found something on the internet that was really good. Unfortunately, it called me before I could actually jot that down, and I'm not able to. But, you know, we all have an understanding of what our school board is for. We elect board members to represent our interests. And hopefully, we've elected adults to do this job. And so I think everyone here is elected. Is that right? Are you elected? You've been elected? I think you were appointed, right, Ms. Singh? Right, and you're up for, yeah, you're up for election this year, right? So something that's very curious, it's unusual to see a group of adults that spend so much time together that don't really enjoy each other's company. But whether or not the individual, as individuals, you enjoy each other's company, enjoy each other's company, or even like each other, it's incumbent upon you to behave like adults. And I'm noticing something on this board that I do not appreciate at all. And I think that that's pretty, it's not just one time or, you know, a couple of times. It's every single time, and it's distracting, and it's disturbing, and I think it needs to stop. Okay, we are adults. We actually need representation. Parents, our parents, the community need representation. And, you know, any sort of dissension in the ranks, we don't want to see that. If it exists, it shouldn't be that apparent. We are adults. You guys are all adults. You guys are all adults, not children. Okay, I think everybody who's here understands exactly what I'm talking about. And another thing that I'd like to ask is, I've been asking for the minutes from the July meeting, and they're not up on the website, so I'd like to know, first of all, I'm kind of curious, because that's kind of an order of business, and I'm not seeing it at all. If those minutes are approved, I'm curious as to why they haven't been posted. It's October.
They will be posted. Okay.
Well, yeah, I've heard that since August, and I'm asking for the July minutes. And I can't, I don't know what's going on in that meeting now because we didn't start, we don't have the YouTube videos until, what, August, sometime in August, and so I have no idea what was going on in July.
Was that the meeting we missed, or we skipped? Because we usually...
We just had a meeting July 1st, and that was it, so. But we'll take care of that after, I'll check with Ms. Heine to make sure that if any meetings that, we have them posted, so, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
So I can see, I can get the minutes, like, in the next day or so?
I'm not sure the timeline, but I'll check with Ms. Heine and see when those will be posted, if they're not already.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda is follows seventeen approval of the minutes, eighteen personnel actions, nineteen CalSTRS waiver requests, twenty variable term credential waiver extension, twenty-one reclassification of Planer I to Planer II, and reclassification of LEAK Custodian I to LEAK Custodian II, twenty-two approval addendum Exhibit A to the Teaching Agreement between Elk Grove Unified School District and California State University Sacramento, twenty-three Regents of the University of California on behalf of the College and Career Academy Support Network contract approval, twenty-four approval of purchase order history, twenty-five ratification of contracts, twenty-six ratification of non-public school, non-public agency contracts, twenty-seven supplemental educational services provider contracts, twenty-eight disposal of obsolete surplus property, twenty-nine acceptance of gifts, thirty instructional material adoption, thirty-one Franklin Elementary School portables 2014 relocatable building installation order number, change order number two, thirty-two project inspector for Marion Mix Elementary School. With that, I'll move the consent agenda as read. I'd like to pull...
To approve the consent agenda as read?
I'd like to pull Item 27. I have a question.
Item 27, then we'll, we want to amend your motion.
Yeah, I amend my motion. I approve the consent agenda minus item number 27.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda minus item 27. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Abstain. Motion is carried unanimously by all present. What is your question on item 27?
Well, I thought we talked about some issues regarding our contracting process, and this item 27, it says the Board of Education is asked to approve SES provider contracts, and there's no amount of these contracts, and what schools they be at, et cetera, et cetera. So they have a lot of questions regarding this item.
Okay, I'll have Mr. Sarudi explain this. It is an item that is required by Title I, that we set aside a certain amount of funds for after-school tutoring. In order to receive Title I funds, we need to set this amount aside, but I'll let Mr. Sarudi answer that question.
The, these contracts are set up whereby there's designated number of students, and each student has a designated number of dollars that is, that are allocated for those students, and then those students are able to access these services, and so it's not necessarily, what we're approving isn't necessarily a specific amount for each. What this is doing is this is approving these specific vendors to provide those designated services. So there's specified amounts for each, for each school, and we could certainly get those dollar amounts for you, but those are, those are specified to us. It's not an open-ended amount.
So we have, we have records within our office regarding, what's, 12 schools are received?
Oh, yes. Yes.
Okay, and the amounts within the office?
Exactly, because it's specific for, it's specific to individual students, and so we have the exact schools, we have the exact amounts, and number of students that will be, have the potential to be serviced, and what the process, really, the process is not one whereby we're developing a budget. That budget is developed and dictated to us. What the process we go through, and it's also very formalized, is the selection of those specific vendors. That's really the process that we undergo is more specific to the vendor selection versus budget development.
Okay, it says here that we have identify year two and beyond program improvement schools. Within those schools that have gone beyond and nothing is working, what do we do? What's the next step?
Well, my first response to that is there are many things that are working in this, in the school. The program improvement is such, and that's established based upon test scores specifically set at the federal government level. What we do is, is there's steps that you go through. We have schools that have been in program improvement for a variety of years, and ultimately, what begins to happen is we continue to provide support, working directly with the principals, directly with the school staff, and including the parents, as we're looking at, depending upon the years they go through, whether that be alternative governance models and things of this nature. So it's individualized to the schools, it's what we've been doing for years. Do we, is there a need for us to continue to improve in those schools? Certainly, but in terms of those schools not working, I would contend that those schools are frankly doing incredible work each and every day, but as we view all of our schools, we'll continue to improve each and every day as well.
And that falls under the No Child Left Behind in those figures. I mean, if we could, it'll catch up with not only Title I schools, a lot of schools on the annually progress. I don't know if you read about that a lot. So it's there, so, and we are doing great work in our Title I schools. Well, I know there's some schools that, within the five years, correct?
Correct. We have, we have schools, we have schools that, once you hit year four and beyond, that's when we start working with the schools in terms of alternative governance, and we work directly with, there's a specific process that Ms. Lowry and the folks and students, or in Learning Support Services, rather, goes and works, and Ms. Cherry in Elementary Education are working directly with those schools, the administration and staff, and so, yes, we've been working directly with those schools for years.
And I believe we do, I report on this at some point during the year with, for the school board that's more detailed. This is something that's required by the, by the Title I funding mechanism, that we don't have a choice on not setting this aside. We have to set this aside for schools that are qualified. But there, but the, but the whole realm of how this is determined, No Child Left Behind, reauthorizing Elementary Second Education Act, all of that is going to come to roost, as Mr. Madison has said, with all the schools in California, unless something has changed in the, in the way that they designate these. But with that, we need to approve the service providers that are required for us to provide for them, so.
I'll move it. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2014-15 Supplemental Education Services Provider Contracts, and I'll do a roll call vote on this, this one. Priscilla?
Aye.
Madison?
Aye.
Fox?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Singh, Ellen?
Aye.
Amavisca?
Yes.
Perez?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. It's approved unanimously, and thank you, Mr. Sarudi, for your insight. For items for future agenda from the floor, I have Mr. Perez. Do you have a specific question on field trips that you, if you could email a specific question on your question on email on field trips?
Yes, SAC State just recently had, in fact, Dr. Ladd was there, and Suzanne, I mean, our public relations officer, was there, and we had a terrific turnout of other high schools that were going to, learning about careers and also college placement workshops at SAC State, and we just recently made a cooperative agreement with SAC State, with President Gonzalez and our junior college president at the Consumer Junior College, and so, but I didn't see very many students from our school district, and so I was wondering, what's the issue? Is, you know, fees, because, to go to SAC State? And there's another really good conference that happens at UC Davis, it's coming up in Caesar Chavez Week, and they have hundreds, well, thousands of students attending this workshop there at UC Davis, and, you know, workshops for these students, enlightening them about careers and college placements, this and that. And so also, I have taken students from other, you know, when I was teaching, I have taken students to different universities and sponsored trips to UC Santa Cruz, UC Davis, San Francisco State, and et cetera. So is there monies for these type of trips?
Okay, so I think what we'll do, unless you want to write, call or write someone specifically, is have, it sounds like you're asking for information on what we provide for students to do college tours and visits and conferences, so...
And I know for a fact that a lot of these students would like to go, but they don't have no monies.
Okay, so we'll find, we'll get B.C. or some information on what we do to assist students in looking at colleges and, or if colleges are coming here, which I know they are this week. And then you had one on student conduct at activities, and then we won't go into detail, but I'll have that down there to look at what we are doing. Any other items for future agendas are from the floor? Then with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.